July 8th Electronic Meeting. We thank Rogers for being on board and we let public know that it will be also available on YouTube tomorrow. So with that, calling the meeting to order, I would ask for approval of the agenda that the agenda of the regular council meeting of July 8th, 2020 be approved as presenter. I have a mover, Councilor Rose and Councilor Levy, all in favor. Okay, that is carried and so we will move on to the proclamations and I have a long one. Proclamation is Town of Penetang Machine proclamation of Fierte Simcoe Pride from July 27th to August 9th, 2020. Whereas this marks the ninth annual Fierte Simcoe Pride and its purpose is to create a safe and inclusive Simcoe County that supports gender and sexual diversity through services, activities, and events. And whereas the rainbow pride flag is raised to honor gender and sexual diversity in Simcoe County, the rainbow flag was designed by Gilbert Baker in San Francisco in 1978. The flag is a symbol of the pride movement and the advancement of human rights for sexual orientation, gender identity and expression and sex characteristics. The color red signifies life, orange is healing, yellow is sunlight, green represents nature, blue symbolizes serenity, peace, and harmony, and finally purple represents spirit. And whereas Fierte Simcoe Pride formed on May 13th, 2012, and its mission is to create and offer inclusive events, services, and educational opportunities that rise above heterosexism, heteronormative, and homo bi transphobia, promoting safe communities within Simcoe County. And whereas Fierte Simcoe Pride is filled with numerous events and activities that focus on education, awareness, community involvement, creative expression, fund for the whole family. Please visit www.fiertepride.com to learn more about Fierte Simcoe Pride and the activities of I S P 2020. Therefore, I Doug LaRue, Mayor of the Town of Penetang Machine, hereby proclaim the weekly, the week of July 27th to August 9th, 2020 as Fierte Simcoe Pride Week. Quite a few tongue twisters in that one. So now we will move on to public meeting and a background to public meeting for application for a draft plan of subdivision file number Penn Sub 202001 and zoning bylaw amendment file these four Harbor Point subdivision that this report be received for discussion and staff be directed to report for a future committee of the whole meeting to address any comments received at the public meeting. And I have to go into my other phone to get the public meeting agenda. Now, I have two here of Andrea and is this the one for public meeting under the Planning Act to consider an application to amend the town zoning bylaw? I can't hear you.
Sorry, your worship, there are two tonight and there you have two parts of your agenda. One is for the removal of the holding symbol and one is for the public meeting. So I was just, I don't have the agenda open. I was moving to that to see what's going on.
I do have the one here then that this is a public meeting under the Planning Act to consider an application to amend the town zoning bylaw. So the purpose of this public meeting is not to engage in a debate regarding the merits of the application, nor is it intended to be a question and answer session. It is to provide an opportunity for the public to make comments and for council members to ask clarifying questions. And so with that, I would ask the planner if she could give us a rundown on this application.
Thank you very much, your worship, members of council and the public. We have an application, there are two applications before council tonight and for which we're holding the statutory public meeting for. It is for the development of what I would call phase four of the Harbor Point subdivision, formerly the Bilil Heights subdivision. Tonight, we also have with us Jamie Robinson. He's the agent on behalf of the owner of this project and he does have a presentation that he'll be showing to you shortly. I did want to confirm that we did give notice of this public meeting on June 10th. It was circulated and to date, we've received comments which are referenced within your staff reports and the agenda from a resident as well as the county of Simcoe. Those are all the comments we've received to date as well as I don't believe anyone here from the public, I don't know if the clerk has heard from anybody recently, but I don't believe we heard any from anybody at the public wishing, sorry, wishing to attend tonight's public meeting either. So I can end it there and I will, I can turn it over to Jamie to give a presentation about the applications.
Jamie, if you would.
Thank you, your worship. Now I just need to, I think, share my screen here. Bear with me for one moment. There, you should all have it now, hopefully.
Yes, we do.
Okay, I've tried to make it as large as possible without losing everybody. So thank you, everybody, for having me, a registered professional planner and a partner with M H B C Planning in Berry and I represent the applicant. And it's very nice to see so many familiar faces, even though it is on a Zoom call and not in person. As Andrea mentioned, this application is for phase four of the Harbor Point subdivision and it's located in the southwestern portion of the town, immediately south of the Looker High School site. In terms of the proposal, what's being proposed here is 33 single-family lots. They range in lot frontage between 12 meters of frontage and 15 meters of frontage. So for those of you imperialists out there, that's between 40, there's some 40 footers, some 45 footers, and some 50 foot lots. The proposed lot area is ranging in size from 380 square meter, square meters to 450 square meters. And there is an amendment to the bylaw proposed to recognize those frontages, those lot areas, and then also a lot coverage of 45% which exceeds the maximum permitted by the bylaw. And really the basis for the lot sizes and the amendments to the bylaw are as a result of trying to get as close as possible to the density requirements that we see in the new planning documents, specifically the growth plan and the county plan. Your zoning bylaw was prepared in 2000, so at that point in time, it really didn't contemplate the intensity of development and the lot sizes that are required now to achieve provincial standards. So that's really the principle behind the request for the smaller lot sizes. And just sort of in broad terms, what these lots would enable is a building envelope on each site between about 2,000, 2,000 square feet and 2,400 square feet. So that's the approximate building envelope for each property based on the lot, the lot coverages that are proposed. So this site is within the neighborhood area designation in the official plan. There is a portion of the site that's, that's zoned rural, or sorry, the majority of the site's zoned rural, there's a, there's a portion in the southern portion of the site here that's zoned environmental protection to reflect the woodlot that's to the south or that's along the southern limits. There was an E I S prepared as part of the proposal and the E I S concluded that that this development within this area of the woodlot would not have an impact on the overall significant woodland that surrounds the site, both to the west and to the south. And I should have mentioned that in terms of surrounding land uses, you've got the Looker High School in this area, you've got some lands that are owned by Simcoe County, part of Simcoe County Forest. These are other lands owned by the developer and part of the consideration and discussions with town staff have been whether these lands can be dedicated to the town or to the county. So we've had some discussions with staff and the county about that and we are, we are amenable to the dedication of those lands as part of this development. They seem to be, they're contiguous with the adjacent county forest, so it would seem to make sense. This area here is the existing Harbor Point subdivision phases, phases one, two, and three. And then to the south of the site, there's a sand and gravel operation. What's been, we have completed a land use compatibility study as part of the review to, because of the proximity of that existing aggregate operation. To ensure that the, the uses. So just in terms of application status and sort of where we've been so far and where we're going, the application was submitted in February, it was deemed complete in June. We're at the public meeting now and there is no decision being made tonight as council is aware, but what we anticipate is there'll be a staff report come forward to a future meeting where Ms. Betty and I have had a chance to review and prepare some conditions of draft approval that, that would apply to the proposed draft plan of subdivision and you would see a bylaw for the zoning bylaw amendment and draft approval conditions and a recommendation come forward at a subsequent meeting. So this is the proposed plan of subdivision. A few things that I'd like to point out for councils, so there is a mix of lot sizes in the proposed development again, between 12 and 15 meters of frontage. As I mentioned, Looker High School is in this, in this area. We have, in this proposed plan, identified the termination of a cul-de-sac in this area. We have talked with staff about the opportunity to modify this slightly, should there ever be a need to extend this road into the county forest to provide for an additional east-west link in the town. So we have had some discussions about that. So I expect this draft plan will be modified slightly in this area. Some of the county comments that have been provided relate to fencing along these lots to prevent encroachment into their woodlot and then similarly if these lands are dedicated to the county, that there be some fencing installed in these areas to prevent encroachment into those, those county lots as well. So just again, I think I've already just given you a pretty good overview of the proposed lot sizes and the, and the frontages, so we'll just move on from that. What this slide illustrates is it's a zoning compliance matrix and in yellow, that's where I think you should focus your attention. This, the second column identifies that the standards in the zoning bylaw for the R2 zone and these proposed areas are the proposed modifications to the zoning bylaw to facilitate the proposed lot sizes. And again, the lot sizes for the R2 zone, which is the zone in the town that focuses on single-family dwellings or single detached dwellings is, is 20 years old, it dates back to 2000 and that's the standard lot size of historic lots in many areas of the town. The lot sizes that are proposed through this, this amendment and plan of subdivision are reflective of all the lot sizes that we, that, and are similar to what we'd see in other, other municipalities throughout the county. So it's, it's not a unique situation.
I lost him, I don't know about anybody else, but.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we're fine, Jamie, go ahead.
Okay, so it's not a unique situation in terms of, and it's not a precedent-setting lot, a situation in terms of lot frontages, lot areas, and lot coverages. It's quite standard and that's one of the challenges as a planner that we're faced with today is trying to achieve the minimum density targets that the province and that the county prescribe in their planning documents when we're dealing with developments such as this. And just in terms of what those documents say, they require us to, to, to target persons and jobs per hectare, 50 persons and jobs per hectare in greenfield areas of which this site is, but that's across the whole municipalities or the whole settlement area. So you could have areas where it's higher, where we have apartment buildings, you could have areas where it's less, where it's singles. What we're coming in with these proposed lots is about in between 30 and 35 persons and jobs per, or persons per hectare. I wanted to just, these next two slides aren't in the package that council has provided. Everything else is the same. I wanted to provide a couple examples of 12-meter frontage lots, so you get an idea of what it might look like. And there are some examples in the Town of Penetang Machine, specifically in the Harbor Point subdivision on Thompson Road West, if you're familiar with that area and the new builds on Thompson Road West. Those lots are also 12 meters of frontage and are comparable in size to what's being requested here. This is an example of a street in Berry, which we've just taken this off Street View, where there's 12-meter frontage lots. The street is to the south of, of the Bryant Drive, very off Mapleview. And just here's another look from the street of what 12-meter frontages look like for single detached dwellings. Just in terms of the policy framework, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but our planning report speaks to that as well as, as the staff report provides an introduction to it as well. I'm just noticing here that we've got the 2014 P P S, which is now, should be 2000 and should be updated and, and so what else we, so from a policy perspective, the proposed development is, is greenfield development and in our opinion, it does conform to the applicable policy documents and is consistent with, with the P P S. That's the P P S, the growth plan, the county plan, and the Town of Penetang Machine's new official plan. In terms of zoning bylaw, the, sorry, this is the official plan map. This just demonstrates that the proposal is within the, the neighborhood area, which is the yellow. The red line here is the, the existing built boundary, so that's where we see development exist today. From an official plan perspective, as I mentioned, we had an E I S done, this green area is the area that's, that's the woodlot and what the E I S identified is that the removal of this, this area, which would be referred to as edge habitat, would not have any impact on the, on the function and the features of the significant woodland. So just a couple slides left here, this slide outlines and summarizes the, the proposed zoning amendment and this figure here identifies the areas to be placed in the various different zones. And again, the table that we saw earlier and what's being proposed by the zoning amendment is to establish three specific, site-specific zones to reflect the lot sizes that are proposed. And I just wanted to provide a brief overview of the various supporting studies that have been provided. So this slide identifies the, the full suite of studies that were submitted in support of the application. And just sort of a few concluding points that I'd like to make is that we believe that the proposed development and, and land use planning, what's often an important factor is compatibility and we hear that word a lot in planning and we've considered the appropriateness of this, this site in terms of surrounding land uses, both the residential to the west, the extraction operation to the south, and we've got the school site to the north and the open space and county forest to the west. And we believe the proposed development is compatible with all of those surrounding land uses. We believe it helps to, to round out and complete this development and we've also provided for future connections if necessary for lands to the west. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any, any questions, I would be happy to do my best to try to answer those. So thank you very much for your time and the opportunity tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. I'm not aware, or do I know if, now, Jamie, are you able to remove your sidebar? Thank you. If there are any members of the public online, I don't believe probably that we don't have any, so with that, I will pass it on and ask any members of council if they have any questions to Jamie.
There are a couple of members of the public that are on right now. I'm not sure if they have any, any questions, but one, I see Don Cox is connecting to the audio, so certainly if you want to ask members of council.
Yeah, I see that possibly Don Fox is, is asking to speak. Don, is that the case?
We might need just to give him a moment to connect to audio if, if you want to go on to members of council.
Okay, and so with members of council, I saw Deputy Mayor, you had your request to speak.
Yes, your worship, I would ask Jamie, in looking at that property, Jamie, it looks like there's embankments. Would they, the developer, what would be done with those? As a final analysis, do they have to sod them or, you know, grade them, that kind of thing?
Through your worship, so in terms of the, the grading and the sodding, yes, those area, any embankments would need to be landscaped appropriately. Those matters would be included as conditions of draft approval that would be addressed through the subdivision agreement and the final engineering submission in terms of grading, but those would be items considered through the draft plan conditions, I'm sure.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Don, do you have your audio up?
I think he's still having trouble, but I did send him a message on the chat, asking him if he wanted to use the chat feature that I would read his message, but I think he's still having trouble, so I'll let you know if I see anything.
Then we'll pass it on to Councilor Rose. Councilor Rose?
Yeah, there we go, we're back on. Jamie, could you give me the distances, the approximate distances from the front of the house to the edge of the road?
Yep, through your worship, so in terms of no proposed amendments to the bylaw are requested for that distance, so the minimum required distance in the zoning bylaw is seven and a half meters, so that's standard for the R2 zone currently in Penetang Machine and we're not proposing to modify that. So we haven't done specific house sighting plans as of yet, but at a minimum, the distance will be seven and a half meters to the front lot line. So the road is usually a distance away from that, so seven and a half meters to where the edge of the road allowance is and then whatever the distance is from, from that point to the pavements, usually.
To the pavement. Now, the 20-meter part of the road is, is standard for a 20-meter width that used to be a little bit bigger, if I remember.
So through your worship, 20 meters is a standard right-of-way width for a local road. If you're dealing with a collector or an arterial, arterial road, the right-of-way, right-of-way width's increased, but 20 meters is the standard in Penetang Machine and throughout the province for a local road. So all, for example, all the concession road allowances that you see in, in rural areas and in rural portions of the municipality would be 20 meters in width. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to ask questions of Jamie? Councilor Badabacher? Still on mute, Councilor Badabacher?
Thank you, sorry, your worship. I just had a question with, with respect to the narrow lot proposals. When I looked at the pictures that you displayed there, it seemed that the setbacks, the side yard setbacks between the two units seemed awfully narrow and I was just curious with respect to whether there was sufficient room to put mechanical equipment such as a central air conditioner in that, in that space and allow for passage in between, in between the units. It just, it looked very, very narrow from the pictures that you provided.
So through your worship, thank you for providing that piece of clarity. The requirement in the zoning bylaw is, is one meter, one meter on each side of a dwelling, so a one-meter interior side yard setback. So the distance between houses that's being proposed here is two meters, so one meter for each lot. Those pictures that you saw have a lesser standard than what's being proposed here. So the lots would be, the houses would be spaced further apart in this proposed development than those images that you saw. And again, the one meter is the standard in Penetang Machine in the R2 zone and no modification of that provision is proposed. Thanks.
Councilor Mayak?
Thank you, your worship. My question is basically like what Councilor Rose was saying about the frontage, like the driveway from the lot line to the garage. If you're saying it's roughly about 21 feet, the length of a normal car is usually around 20 feet, but now you've got some of these bigger trucks, you know, they're almost 22, 23 feet, like a three-quarter ton truck, which means my, like the ass end of the truck will be on the asphalt. And in the wintertime, if I've got company coming, if I've already owned two vehicles, where do they park in the wintertime? They can't park around the street, they're going to get towed. What are you going to do, wreck my lawn, make a driveway on my lawn? I'm worried about that, it's too close to the road.
So through your worship, I think I can hopefully provide a little bit of clarity with respect to that. The, the distance of seven and a half meters from the front wall of the house or front wall of the garage, whatever the case may be, is the minimum requirement is seven and a half meters to the edge of the lot line. The distance to the pavement from the edge of the lot line is usually about two meters. So you've got about nine meters or nine and a half meters between the front of the house and a, and where the actual pavement would be. So that distance is, standard parking space is six meters in length, so we're about three meters longer than a standard parking space. So there will be sufficient room for vehicle parking within a driveway. And again, that is not a provision that's proposed to be amended here, that's the standard for the, the Town of Penetang Machine right now is the seven and a half meter front yard setback.
Councilor Mayak, everybody?
Yep, yes, is there a sidewalk that's going to be going on that road?
Through your worship, there is, we don't know that yet, there is, it is likely there will be a sidewalk on one side of the road. We haven't done the cross-section to specifically identify the location of the sidewalk, the location of the road within that 20-meter right-of-way. What I can tell you though is what a 20-meter right-of-way allows for in terms of, of a cross-section for a road is it allows for two traveled lanes, it allows for street parking on both sides of the road and it allows for sidewalk on both sides of the road. So within that standard 20-meter right-of-way width, that is what you see in a typical road with sidewalks on both sides of, of a street. Those items that you've addressed, addressed, they will be required conditions of draft plan approval and the detailed cross-sections and detailed drawings associated with the road and the sidewalk would be definitely required as a condition of draft plan approval. But what we can, what we can do for the, before this comes to council is for the recommendation report for Andrea, we can prepare a cross-section and you can prepare the details that show you where the house would be located, where a car would be sighted and a truck would be sighted in a driveway in comparison to the sidewalks, so that the council has a clear visual on how that would all function with cars on the street, cars parked on the street, cars parked in the driveway and people walking on the sidewalks. You have a clear understanding of how that functions.
Well, the reason I was asking is that's what happened with Bilil, the, the first phase, phase one Bilil Heights. That's what they had said, 20 feet and all that, but once they put the sidewalk, the guys, they. That's what they had said, 20 feet and all that. But once they put the sidewalk, the guys, like the rear end of the truck was almost touching the sidewalks. Someone, the snowplow or the sideways plow, sidewalk plow, sorry, went by, almost hit his truck. So if you're telling me you put a sidewalk, you've cut down his parking space. That's the way I see it.
Yep.
Hey, Counselor Rose, did you have another question?
Uh, no, Jamie covered it with his last response.
Okay. Are there any other members of council who wish to question Jamie? No. And did our guy ever get in there?
Your worship, he, he was attempting to come in and then left and tried and then came back and it appears that he's gone again. But both either the Director of Planning and I will really reach out to him to find out if he does have any comments, because there's no decisions being made today. If there are comments or questions, we can certainly follow up and make sure his questions or concerns are answered by, by whoever can answer them.
Okay, that is good. And I guess with that, Andrea, maybe you summarize the next steps, please?
Thank you very much, your worship, and to members of council. So this was the statutory public meeting on these two applications. As Jamie noted, typically we then go back and take a look at some of the details of the subdivision, receive some more comments. I am surprised sort of that we haven't received a few more, especially from the school boards specifically with this application. So I do expect over the next week or two that we'll get something else in. So a follow up report to council will be prepared with the results of today's public meeting, some with recommendations on conditions and a zoning bylaw for council's consideration. That will be coming up sometime this fall.
Thank you, Andrea, and thank you, Jamie.
All right. Thank you very much, counsel and your worship. I appreciate it.
You. So moving on, we will go to B, which is a zoning bylaw amendment.
Sorry to interrupt your worship. There is a motion related to that, that item.
Okay, then I have a mover in a second, or please?
Would you like me to read the motion just to ensure?
If you wish, Madam Clerk, it would be good.
All right, that this report would be received for, for discussion and that staff be directed to prepare a report for a future committee of the whole meeting to address any comments received at the public meeting.
Mover. Counselor Clu and Secretary Counselor LaRose, all in favor. Okay, that is carried. And now we will move on to the zoning bylaw amendment. Removal of the holding H symbol for 28 McCarthy Drive, PL 2020 dash 21. That is zoning by law amendment to remove the holding H symbol for the property musically known as 28 McCarthy Drive be approved. So Madame Planner, if you would give us a lowdown and a rundown. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship. It is a technical application to remove the holding symbol from this property. The applicant has demonstrated to the satisfaction of the G official that, sorry, the septic on the property.
Are you frozen, Andrea?
We've received no comments to date with respect to the application.
Okay, thank you very much. And are there any questions or concerns with this? If not, again, Madam Clerk, we need a mover in a second around this. So mover. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Duvo and Counselor Sanima, all in favor. Gary, thank you. With that, we will move on to eight, which is adoption of minutes not already confirmed. So we have minutes of council, June 10th, 2020, committee of the whole, June 10th, 2020.
Sorry, your worship. We do have a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club just before the minute.
Yes, yes, Amanda, we forgot all about Amanda.
We didn't forget. We didn't forget. Hi, Amanda. So I, it is, it's little tiny spot on the bottom of that page there. So I'm going to share my screen and attempt to play this presentation for Amanda. What it is, is a slideshow that she's recorded her voice to, just in case her internet connection wasn't working. Hopefully it will work for me. And please feel free to yell and text me or whatever if it doesn't work. Because we, I mean, we've done this before. So bear with me.
Do we have a voice to go with it?
Okay, okay, okay.
Madam Clerk, nothing moving.
We have no voice either.
We can read it. Madam Clerk, we're not getting any voice. We certainly have a picture and it can be read.
Mr. Mayor, I just wonder if Amanda maybe can walk us through, is she able to just walk us through quickly some of the highlights or the key points from the slide?
Amanda, can you do that, please?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that.
Sorry, Amanda. Everyone has a copy of the presentation in the agenda, so it doesn't seem like it's working. I can share the screen and go through the slides if you want, or you can get given overview, because they do have the, the presentation with them in front of them, whichever you prefer.
Um, you know what, if we could pull up the slides, it's a bit helpful just I can read through what I have here and then we'll go through that, that work. Okay, so I'd just like to say thank you so much for having me here this evening to present to both the Boys and Girls Clubs of North Simcoe. Um, so I'm going to start with a little bit about our history, our club. So if we're on slide two, Stacy, perfect. So our club was established in 2005 out of our local church by community members that had been involved with Boys and Girls Clubs in Ontario. They knew the value of what a club would do to bring to North Simcoe and could have a positive impact for children. In 2007, the club partnered with the Town of Midland and moved into our current location at the North Simcoe Sports Recreation Centre. This partnership was brought around by the Town of Midland evaluating their programs and the benefits to the town to partner with an experimental organization. Part of the original agreement with the Town of Midland was that their staff was running these programs with the club and that funding would cover an amount that would help with our stability. By 2009, the club was running on its own and had fully assumed all the children's and youth programs for the Town of Midland. So offer, the programs that we offer are summer camps, after school programs, evening programs for children and youth. Um, we have summer camps and after school programs for them substantially over the years. And now annually, the club sees more than 300 children and youth in our space with over hundreds more children and youth out in our community while we attend the NDA event. In 2013, the club became a full member in good standing with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Canada. This has allowed the club the ability to access additional funding and programming to help give additional opportunities to our community's children and families. In 2020, so this year, in March, we actually celebrated our 15th anniversary, about two days before we had to close due to the pandemic. It was a pretty exciting time for us and we're excited to be continuing to grow and move forward. Next slide, please. So the North Simcoe Club is one of 89 clubs across Canada. So we have a great partnership with Boys and Girls Clubs of Canada, as well as with all of our partner clubs. We are able to pull from them for different resources, different programs, as well as partner with them for different programs. Some of the value of being a part of this network is that we get a lot of encouragement, we work together, and that we support our children across the country. Sorry, lost myself. Here I am. So our mission is that we are providing a safe space for children and youth. And that we are, sorry, in North Simcoe. So we want to be able to be that place where we can really create an environment for children to thrive, for families to receive their support that they need as well. And our core values are belonging, respect, encouragement and support, working together and speaking. Next slide, please.
Very good. Do members of council, please, maybe could, can you remove it now?
Your worship, I don't think she was done her presentation.
I thought you said that was it. Keep on. You're doing well.
No, no problem. So stronger together is our club strategic plan for 2020, 2023, to 2023, so the next three years. Our plan was created after consultation with community partners, club parents, staff and board members. The focus of our plan is to grow our clubs to better serve our community, that will bring services to youth who need us most and be a voice to local, provincial and federal governments on the needs of our youth. That we will build our partnerships and be strong together to serve our community and to build a strong club that will be in our community for many years to come. As part of this plan, the club has specifically named the Town of Penetang Machine in our strategic plan as a place where we want to grow our programs over the next three years. Next slide. Part of our stronger together is in the work that we do with our community and national partners. Locally, the club works with other organizations to provide recreational activities and support each other in our community. Through our summer programs, the club coordinates with Kitala Community Services, Family Connections, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of North Simcoe and Heroine Transition Homes to provide camp experiences for children and youth of all abilities. By being a member of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Canada, our club is able to access funding to enhance what the club offers through partnerships that they have built and programs created in partnership with national organizations like J's Cares Foundation, Giant Tiger and PC Children's Charities. Next slide, please. Currently, the club is working with J's Cares Foundation to support our virtual programs this summer, both financially and in program training and implementation. Canada Summer Jobs is providing the club with leaders to run our summer programs. And PC Children's Charities will be funding our summer, summertime Eat Well program. This is the second year that they've done that. And what it does is make sure that children that are coming to the club or that are out in our community are receiving food, so that they're getting that coverage from school, end of school time, the next school time, and still making sure that they have snacks and meals in that period. The club works throughout the year on various grant opportunities to support our programs and keep them affordable for all our families. So our program here, so the North Simcoe Club core program are our after school, tween after school program and summer program. The after school program serves seven of our local schools, including children from St. Louis and St. Joseph's School in Penetang. Children that attend the program have the opportunity to engage in volunteering leaders, play games in the gym, receive homework help and participate in STEM activities. Our summer camps have grown year after year with 2019 having eight weeks of children's camps and seven weeks of youth camps. One of our youth camps this last year was also a leaders in training, where 17 of our youth were trained as leaders and came back and volunteered over 800 hours at the club. The club has programs that we run throughout the year that are open to youth from all community members, so from Route North Simcoe to participate in, such as our Learn to Run program, which teaches children how to run a five kilometer run, and then we enter them into the butter cart trot each year. So last year, we had 25 participants that ran with volunteers. So these are different types of programs as well that we'd be able to bring into Penetang Machine with us if we were to provide programming in the area. Next slide, please. The programs that are currently offered at our Midland location are at capacity, and the club is ready to expand to meet the needs in our community. The first step that we see to our expansion is working with the Town of Penetang Machine to assume responsibility of the town's summer camp program in 2021. The club will work with the town throughout the transition and use our strong base and knowledge to continue to build on your summer camp successes. After this successful summer camp program, the club would be interested in children and youth in their own area that's accessible to them with programs such as the Learn to Run program, Girls at Bat, or Kid Food Nation program that is a cooking, how to learn how to cook program that's sponsored by PC Children's Charities. As program demand increases in Penetang Machine, the club would look at opening a second location for our after school program. Currently, right now, the kids that come from St. Louis and St. Joseph are bussed through the school to our location in Midland. So if there is a demand for the club to open here in the Town of Penetang Machine, then we would be open to doing so as well. Next slide, please. I'd just like to thank you all very much for having me here this evening. We're very excited about our next steps and what the club can do to further serve our children and youth in the Town of Penetang. Thank you.
Members of council, do you have any questions to Amanda? Counselor Vadimovka?
Thank you. Not a question, but just a comment. I'm familiar with the programs that are offered by the Boys and Girls Club and, and they run a really nice program. And it would be great to see our residents being able to benefit from it. So I look forward to the discussion later in the agenda.
Thank you. And if you will just bear with me, counsel, I have lost my agenda. Way back.
I think we lost your volume, Mayor. Mayor LaRue, we can't hear you.
Very good. So Amanda, well, I don't think I'm on mute.
Okay, sorry, maybe.
Are you hearing me? Yeah. Yeah. And so I'm just saying thank you, Amanda. A presentation well done in the end. And I think that we will certainly be taking all of this into consideration. And I think that we will certainly be taking all of this into consideration. So with that, now we will move on to item eight, which is the adoption of minutes not already confirmed. So we have minutes of council June ten, two thousand and twenty, committee of the whole, June ten, two thousand and twenty, special council, June ten, two thousand and twenty, and that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted as circulated. Are there any questions or concerns about any of these minutes? If not, if you can have a mover, please. Counselor Levy, and seconded by Counselor LaRose, all in favor. Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, a draft new property standards bylaw, public comments and graffiti removal. Questions or concerns regarding the counselor clue?
Thank you, your worship. We are on the draft property standards bylaw, are we not? Yes?
We are at the draft new property standard bylaw, yes.
Making sure.
Graffiti removal, yeah.
I understand this is the consent item and this is on the, the bylaw itself is on tonight's meeting. I do have some concerns about the costs of cleaning up the graffiti. And so I'm looking to have this item given further consideration about how these costs of cleaning up the graffiti will be paid for. It feels a little bit unfair to me to have somebody clean graffiti up on their property when it wasn't their fault to begin with. And so I'm looking to see if there's a way we can do a little more research, find a way to possibly fund it ourselves, do a shared cost arrangement with the property owner and ourselves or some other options potentially.
I take it, Counselor, that you're making reference to private property?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or concerns on this? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, your worship. One of the reasons I brought up this bylaw and recommendations was to just do exactly what Counselor Clu has just said. The bylaw exists already. Our job is to find out how we're going to enforce it. So whether we do a shared cost or whether we do, you know, how much time are they given before the graffiti is removed? Those types of things that I've asked for. And obviously, there has been some requests as well on clarifications in other parts of this draft bylaw. So those are the types of things I've been looking for. I suggested to go to the city of Toronto. They have a fabulous program. City of Saint Catharines also has a great program for having graffiti removed. So these are the types of things, it's great to put it in a bylaw and the legal ease is there. But how, what policies do we have to enforce or to encourage the graffiti to be removed? And so that's where I was sitting when I asked for this bylaw in the first place.
So we are looking at concerns of removal and we're looking at concerns of who pays what. So Andrea, do you have any comments to this?
Thank you very much, your worship, and to members of council. I appreciate those comments. I'm not sure if you're hearing me. I'm getting a notice that my connection's a little unstable, so. I think that was part of the information that we did hear back as noted was around graffiti and and costs around that's being implemented by this property standards. So I hear the feedback from Counselor Clu and Counselor Cummings. And I think, you know, if desired, we can come back with some some options there for council's consideration that before passage of that bylaw that is proposed for tonight. So I'm not sure I can offer much more than that.
Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, worship. I'm not opposed to passing the bylaw. I just think we need something that needs to be put into place as to how we are going to have it removed. So along with the legal part, which is the bylaw that we're presenting tonight and passing, we need something that helps us with to get rid of, and this is not only graffiti, but anything in the property standards bylaw needs an explanation. We keep on saying we're priding ourselves because we're communicating with the public. But this bylaw that we're going to pass tonight tells us what they want, we want, but not how or how it's going to proceed. So there's no policy in place. And I think that's overall what I'm looking for as well.
Madam Kirk, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just to clarify, so the bylaw that was drafted and placed on the last agenda was to sort of put out the parameters between what we would allow and what we wouldn't allow. And then the policy is actually part of, and our director of planning can interrupt me if I'm wrong, but the policy is actually the infraction. So the bylaw officer sees an infraction, she puts for the building official and it depending on what the situation is and they put forward an order and the orders follow a standard fine allocation. But I recognize that that doesn't actually spell that out in the bylaw. But the concern that I have is that if we're identifying in the bylaw that the pay, what is happening is is people are being told that they have to remove it at their cost, which is what is in the bylaw right now as it stands. If that is not what council wants, then I would recommend that we don't pass the bylaw tonight, if that's if that's what I'm hearing versus pass it and make a change and come back. So if, it just really depends on what council wants. The fee bylaw is what is where is where the fees for these these infractions from the property standards bylaw comes in. So one bylaw points to the other in terms of what what the fee will be. So it won't say it specifically in that property standards bylaw, but it does say in the fee bylaws. So I can understand that it's not exactly easy to follow, but I do want to make sure that it is exactly what council wants before we pass it. So happy to take feedback and happy to have staff that both Andrea and myself come back with with options or changes as prescribed by council.
So with that, I would suggest perhaps that members of council, Counselor Cummings, Counselor Clu, whatever recommendations or changes that you would possibly like to see in this bylaw be discussed with the planner and that the planner and the clerk can, as pointed out, come back with a new bylaw and that we forego passing this bylaw this evening. Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, worship. The bylaw itself does not say when or how to to get rid of the graffiti just as appropriate measures shall be taken. We don't know what that is because there's no policy around it. So it doesn't mean we can't pass the bylaw tonight. It just means we need a policy in place. If someone comes to me or I go to the town and I say, somebody's just written on my wall, what am I going to do now? Well, get rid of it. Well, how, when and whose cost? So the bylaw exists already in the Property Standards Act. It has for years. So it's not really a separate bylaw. It's just how we proceed in getting rid of it.
But then what you're proposing, Counselor Cummings, would be a policy as opposed to the bylaw? So that it would be a policy that would have to be enacted as well as the bylaw.
Well, in essence, that's what it is. Your worship, anything on this particular document that we're passing tonight? There's no policy as to how it's supposed to happen. We make the laws and the laws are there, but there's no procedures or policies in place that help people or communicate to people that, you know, this can't happen. And if it does happen, there's a procedure. For instance, and I'm just throwing this out, graffiti gets on your wall, you have seventy-two hours to get rid of it.
Or in your case, it's the when and how, and in Counselor Clu's case, it's who pays.
Well, it's all of that. I think that it's all who pays for an exterior that's dilapidated, ta la. Where'd she go?
She's there somewhere. Can you hear me, space?
Sorry, my internet was cutting out while Brian was talking.
I asked, are these, would these things be added in the existing bylaw or would there be a separate policy set?
I'll let our director of planning respond to that as it is under her department, this enforcement of this bylaw.
Okay, Andrea, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship. I think I'm hearing kind of a couple of different things, so I just wanted to clarify on that. So, sorry, Counselor Cummings, I think I agree with you in that the bylaw largely already is there with the, what we needed to the enforcement part. It's this kind of new endeavor of going down the path of what role will the municipality play in matters such as graffiti removal? Because it's not a typical property standards matter specifically. It's not, I forgot, I didn't cut my grass or I forgot to take care of my buildings, that kind of thing. It is, you were affected by a crime. And so I think that's why we did want to bring that memo forward to give some sense of the cost for the public because they are a victim of a crime and these costs will be borne by them. I think the other part that I know I mentioned earlier today in my chair and vice chair meeting was about the graffiti happening on public utilities, Canada Posts, mailboxes, the transformer stations, those types of things. Those are pieces of utility equipment that get tagged all the time that we also need to approach too. So I think what I would like to do or what I would suggest here is a couple of things. I think there's a good chance that the property standard bylaw may need some language amendments to make what I'm hearing Counselor Clu and Counselor Cummings kind of want to come forward with a policy and procedures component. So I guess what I would suggest, hearing that, and I can take it back and we can do some stuff around the policy procedure, the financial component, make sure if there's any changes to the graffiti bylaw that there is none or there is and bring this forward in the future. That would be my suggestion after hearing this feedback from council tonight.
Very good. Are we good with that? Counselor Cummings, Counselor Clu? So we will forego the bylaw for tonight and then Andrea will come back with something else. Okay. So we will move on to matters for consideration and we have a verbal report from a chief administrative officer, Rita COVID nineteen situational update. So Mr. C A O, please.
Thank you, worship. I trust everyone can can hear me, okay? Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. As council is aware, throughout this pandemic, staff have made efforts to keep council as well as the public informed and regular communication via both email as well as public communication releases that are done on at least a weekly basis. So with that in mind, I did want to just provide a very brief summary of changes that have occurred from our last verbal update and our last council meeting on June the tenth. A lot has transpired from a provincial perspective and I'm looking at a whole list of things that that has occurred. And I don't think I need to walk everyone through those. But suffice to say that a couple of days after our last council meeting, the province moved many regions to many regions in the province to stage two of their opening right through to as recent as yesterday. As council and the public is aware, our local health unit made some, made a fairly substantial announcement with respect to mandatory face coverings that that essentially become effective this coming Monday, July thirteenth in indoor public settings. So a lot has transpired in between those almost thirty days. Locally at the town, I think it's also fair to say that a lot has transpired. You know, right from council approving or making, making it known that with their desire to establish a business recovery free task force, return to normal working group provided their final draft of the recovery framework to the control group as well as staff have started bringing back a number of contract positions in various departments. Departmentally, with respect to service level impacts, since June tenth, the majority of the update will result, will revolve around recreation and community services. So since June tenth, the following facilities have been opened, bocce ball courts, public access to the T dock at the Wharf, public washrooms at the Wharf, as well as Huronia Park with portable toilets brought into Rotary Charm Plainland app park. As well as the beaches did get opened after the the swim advisory was posted. And as recent as yesterday, the splash pad, or sorry, I guess yesterday, the splash pad was opened with a number of protocols put in place. In addition, our R C S staff are working to develop a plan, operationalize the museum and prepare for a potential museum opening in the near future. And lastly, under our R C S, as council is aware and the public is aware, we have advertised for our first program to be held on July the twelfth this coming, this coming weekend. It's a babysitting course that will be offered in partnership with with CERT in hopes of assisting some families with their childcare needs this summer. From a planning and development perspective, we did bring on on a summer and functional and additional contract position. From a finance and corporate services perspective, and more specifically human resources and health and safety, a number of onboarding has occurred with respect to three additional R C S attendance. And as a result of that, our full-time staff are redeployed from the Wharf back to their home positions. Two community ambassadors have been hired and currently working on a third. And essentially, these positions are looking or will be looking to assist in staffing the splash pad as well as patrolling high-traffic areas in the parks to educate, provide education to the public. There's three parks labors that have been hired to help service the washroom facilities as well as upkeep with general parks maintenance. And lastly, our museum programmer has been redeployed back to to her home position in in preparation for the opening at the museum and and starting to offer services out of the museum. Where we are today, I did allude to the our local health unit's announcement yesterday from Dr. Gardner with respect to mandatory face coverings in indoor public settings. And ultimately, he is providing instruction to the businesses and organizations under the provincial order, Emergency Maintenance Civil Protection Act. We continue as a municipality and from an administration perspective, continue to follow guidance from the province and our local health unit as well as our municipal control group continues to meet on a weekly basis. Our return to normal working group through the Human Resources Department as well as in consultation with the control group has completed the recovery framework report, which will be presented to council this evening. As council and the public is aware, the primary goal of this framework is to ensure the health, safety and wellness of our staff as well as community at large. We want to create and maintain a safe environment while we continue to strive to deliver service excellence and redesign for our new normal with respect to town operation. The COVID nineteen working group is currently putting the appropriate controls in place in our facilities so that that being signage, floor markings, hand washing and sanitation protocols, sneeze guard barriers, standard operating procedures. And these are all being done to ensure a safe transition and reopening. And I guess just my last point is, again, we we appreciate everyone's patience and support as we navigate through these changes. Staff throughout a number of departments have done an excellent job at getting us where we are today. We are proud of the fact that our numbers are low in Penetang Wishing. We want to keep it that way. And ultimately, we don't want to be, we don't want to be a statistic, nor do any other of our businesses in town that are taking, that are taking great measures to maintain that due diligence. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's my my brief verbal update. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. C A O. Okay. Thank you, Mr. CAO. Members of Council, anyone have any questions to the CAO? Okay, they're being done. Counselor Levy, are you still there? Okay, I didn't see your pretty little face there. And with that, I'm going to move on to the Business Recovery Task Force in terms of reference PL 2020 dash 25. And that the Business Recovery Task Force becomes composed of the following three members of Council. Now, the Business Recovery Task Force, I know for a fact that in the lockabout which I was a part of and, and other, a few other members of Council who have a grave interest in that. And that was our Deputy Mayor and Counselor Clu and Counselor Levy. So with that, and it's good that we have the planning people there. With that, I'm asking that Deputy Mayor Dubo, Counselor Clu, and Counselor Levy be the three members on the Business Recovery Task Force along with our CAO and our Director of Planning, Community Services. So I will ask Deputy Mayor, would you consent to being part of that committee? Yes, Counselor Clu? Yes, and Counselor Levy? Yes. So we have our three members and the CEO in that. So are there any questions or concerns regarding this matter? If not, all in favor?
Sorry, Worship, I do need a mover and a seconder.
Okay, mover, Counselor LaRose, and a seconder, Counselor Maya. All in favor? Thank you. And that will bring us on to the staff report, PL 2020 25, the Business Recovery Task Force Terms and Reference that we have already done that. On to the Town of Penetang Machine Recovery Framework and that as recommended, recommendation from the Return to Normal Working Group and the Municipal Emergency Control Group, Council adopts the recovery framework as presented. And so I would ask our HR person, Tammy, if you would give us the report on this, please.
Um, I, do you want to just unblock my camera, Stace? It said I wasn't allowed to do it. Oh, okay, start my video. Okay, good. Hi.
There we are.
Okay. So through your worship, I will just do a quick like summary or overview of the report and then be happy to answer, field any questions. So as you are aware, several weeks ago, we developed a COVID-19 working group with, with staff representation. We surveyed all of the staff and we looked at hazards and controls. And then we also kind of drafted this, this recovery plan, which we then took to the Emergency Control Group for review and comment. And we ended up with this final document. The, the other piece that we did do was there was some concern just around opening, which I'll get into in a second. But, so we did take those in, into consideration when we were considering the, the phased approach. So as you will see in the recovery document, there is a three-phase recovery approach. We are past phase one, we're into phase two. And what we were looking at was three parts in, in part two. So part A, looking at a July, mid-July start where staff can start to volunteer to come into the office. And of course, not before we've implemented all of the safety measures, which I'll talk to in a second. And then we added to make appointments available during that time as well, just to open it up a little bit more for the public. But of course, being very cautious. Then part B would be mid-August is the proposed kind of timeline. And staff would be, and sorry, and let me just go back. We've broken up and we've been in teams since before we shut down the office. We did this strategically because when you're in teams, of course, if, if one person goes down in the department, the whole department doesn't go down. So strategically, that's why we went into teams and we've, we've sustained that throughout. So for those of us who've been working remotely, we can only go into the office on our team day. And that's to ensure that we're not cross-contaminating and, and potentially, you know, bringing down more people than just in our team. So that's been continued throughout. So if, just coming back to, to B, so mid-August, staff going in on their team day. So instead of just voluntary, on their team day, staff would be going into the office. And business would be done with the public by appointment. And then moving on to, to C, which would be mid-September. And then we would be looking at opening the front doors and having the public be able to have access with controls in place. So some of the controls Jeff had already mentioned that we are currently working on. The sneeze guards, we've been told this week, they're currently in manufacture mode. So we're hoping they're going to be installed by next week. We also have some procedures that we're putting in place and they're in, they're out right now to all management team for review. I was in yesterday and Roy and I were looking at the ins and outs and the logistics of, you know, how people can move through the building safely, as well as the floor decals and all of those, the signage, which is, is important. Let's see, what else? The other thing, as you know, that we've had to deal with is the province giving us short notice to reopen in their recovery. And so, you know, the first hurdle that we had to get through, and, and I think was handled really well, thanks to Sheri and her team, was the opening of the Wharf. So we were, you know, scrambling last minute to try to staff it. We did some redeployment measures, but we had to get the docks in. So there was delays and of course, you know, people hear that things are open and they want them open immediately. However, you know, we have to kind of get our ducks in a row in order to make that happen to, you know, the splash pads opening. And, you know, we had to get ambassadors in place. So Amy has been working diligently, trying to get all of the staffing in place to support us being able to be open. Because when this first happened, we didn't anticipate when this was going to start to, we were going to get into recovery mode. So what else? Oh, the other part of this is of course, Amy sat, she sat on the North Simcoe Control Group. So they had a working group as well. And so being cognizant of, of our neighbors and trying to stay in line so that, you know, members of our public as, you know, they visit all of our areas. So just what they're doing, I know Tiny is not looking currently at opening their doors at all right now. They're, they're just kind of waiting. Midland, their plan is in line with what we have planned and what we've laid out in, in the document. And Tay is, is kind of slowly moving and talking about appointment only. And so they're talking about doing some more real, but are looking to do the same concept as us. So they're not having all of their staff in at the same time. It's a reduced number. And that's just to be very cautious and that we're not cross-contaminating. And of course, we need to field our way through the safety measures and making sure that they're working as well. So I'm not sure, is there anything, Jeff, you'd like to touch on that I may have missed?
Hey, Mr. CAO?
Through your worship, maybe I'll just add a couple of points, just to compliment Tammy, what you've touched on. And just, you know, and I did mention it before, but this plan or proposed plan that's in front of Council ultimately has been put forth by, by our working group in conjunction with the Municipal Emergency Control Group. It's not a plan that's been put forward by one individual. It's a plan that's been put forward by the control group after essentially 28 meetings from the, from the middle of March through to today. So substantial work and discussion has taken place over the last 17 weeks, I guess, to, to get to where we are today. The premise and the overarching goals have not changed, that being the health, safety, and wellness of our staff and the public. The, the belief of the control group is that by taking a cautious and steady approach, you know, not only are we in line with our North Simcoe municipalities, but it also prevents us from running into operational impacts and potential business continuity challenges down the road if, if we have a situation where a good bulk of our staff do get, do get infected. It's been said by a number of municipal organizations that speedy reopening will create operational havoc. And the control group certainly is, is of that mindset. Transitioning staff and creating that adjustment for them to get back into the office without giving them a good opportunity to get comfortable being in the office before providing access to the public. And not only does it raise the risk of failure and causes the potential cause of more disruption, but it creates potential erosion of trust with the public. And that's not what we want to do. Control group believes that we've, we've, you know, with the assistance of Council, we've maneuvered our way through this relatively well. And we want to maintain that path. I did talk a little bit about business continuity. We are a lean team. We're not a large municipality. And we recognize that some municipalities with more staff may be a little more advanced than us. But we are very cognizant of what the future might bring with respect to if, if we do have a, an unfortunate circumstance in our workplace. I think senior team with the assistance of the control group has done an excellent job with, ultimately right, right through to frontline staff of creating a, an environment where there's minimal impacts to service delivery to the public. I can confidently say that our customer service frontline staff at Town Hall has not received any inquiries from the public with respect to, you know, services that maybe we're not offering or when, when we're opening. We are very aware that the serviced, you know, of the service excellence component, and never will we lose sight of that. But I think it's, suffice to say that, you know, we have got feedback from the public that, that they do appreciate the cautious approach that we're taking. And, and, you know, obviously we saw Dr. Gardner's announcement yesterday with, with mandatory face covering. As I alluded to before, we continue to follow the advice of our local health unit. I can, I can tell you that their plan won't see, won't see them bringing staff back en masse at the local health unit for a number of months and potentially into, into, into 2021 potentially. And so the, the recommendation from them is, you know, and what they're supporting is when positions that require an in-office presence need to be in the office, that we, that we ensure that there's the appropriate protocols in place. Since, I mean, that, that's what our intent is. And so with that, with that, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add those pieces that I think were kind of touched on in Tammy's report a little bit. But I just wanted to add those pieces to complement what Tammy had summarized.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. So members of Council, the questions, concerns, or comments? Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Worship. I, I just wonder about the plan. I understand being cautious and I understand that we want to make sure that everybody's okay and good to go, but pharmacy is open, the local food stores are open, the liquor store, the beer stores, the takeout places, taxi cabs are running. I, I find that waiting till September is, is long. I, I would rather see that, that plan speeded up. We can go to the dentist, you can go get a haircut, you can do most things. When I look at the town office especially, we have approximately 17, 18 people working in the building on two separate floors with three exterior exits that they can use. I, I don't see how this wouldn't be a big problem to, to make happen a little quicker.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Maya?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, like, two months, three months, I have a bit of a problem with that. Just going to put a scenario, I guess, or an example. You folks all know where I work. And we are only working from 12 to four. Any office, we are six feet apart when we're sitting behind the shield. And I deal with an average of 200 people in four hours from Ottawa to Windsor to Thunder Bay. The people do respect the six, six feet apart. Most of them, I would say maybe 40% do have a mask. I started on, I think it was May, May 10th, May 12th, whatever the date was, in May sometime. And I've yet, I've yet to have anybody in the lineup or in the office cough or spit or have the sniffles or had a fever. I haven't seen that happen yet and I've been working for two months. Now, how many people are we going to come to the Town Hall? That is going to be from out of town? Maybe 5%? Most of the people we have will be our town residents, which we know here between Tiny Tay, Midland Penetang Machine, we may have, what, five, six, seven, eight cases? I'm not, I'm not so sure that I'm percent of the count. And I mean, most of the staff are in their separate room where they have the viters. Why can't we put shields? And then, you know, no masks, no service. You can put that on the door after what they passed last night. And I, I think I'd like to, like, Counselor Rose, speed this up. I think we're taking too long and like, look at what's open and, and you just take like me for an example. Like, I deal with 200 customers a day and I've yet to see anybody, you know, they have the, the virus and like they're from all the, the whole area. So I'd like to see it speed up, please. Thank you.
Counselor Butterbucker? Counselor Butterbucker?
Thank you, Worship. Hopefully everybody, everybody will bear with me because I have a little bit to say on this subject. So we did have a lively conversation at our section meeting earlier this week. And I'm going to repeat some of it and other parts I'm just going to skip over because I don't think it's germane to our conversation today. So just, just to backtrack a bit, on June 19th, the CAO sent an email out to members of Council with a draft of the proposed recovery framework. And in that document, it was stated, and this was June 19th, I believe, that the CAO sent this out. And in that document, it was referred to, it was outlined in terms of the recovery as outlined earlier this evening. I read it twice. I immediately contacted His Worship to have a meeting to express my concerns as His Worship sits on the control group and said that it's way too long. A September opening to the public is way too long. And I, the following day, I sent an email to the CAO and I just indicated that I'd had a conversation with the mayor and these are my views. So fast forward, certainly I was waiting for the report because the report was a draft report when I was submitted around the 19th of June. I, in my email to our CAO and our conversation with, with His Worship, I suggested on the 19th of June that I thought a date of July 20th would be reasonable. That was a month. That was a month from the 19th to July 20th. And so at the section meeting, I also mentioned that date. I'm going to come back to that in a second. But I'm, I'm very concerned from a, from a service to the public perspective in terms of not having our public counters open to the public. I have heard through my walks in the neighborhood, just in my interactions with people around town in terms of people wanting to come to Town Hall and conduct their business. You've heard of Counselor You've heard of, uh, Counselor Myatt in terms of his interactions. The banks have been open. Um, I went to a dentist appointment, all of this under phase two of the reopening. And the question that I get is why isn't the municipal office open? Uh, all these other offices, especially dentists and, and the like are high risk. With close proximity, et cetera, et cetera, and our municipal office is not open. Um, I have a question with respect to the number of public counters we have. I'm not sure if, if the counter at Public Works is still open, but is the counter at Public Works still open for people to come in and, and. Do a transaction whether to buy a water meter or not?
Through, through your worship, I see our director of public works answering, but it is, uh, it is open to the public at our Public Works administration.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think, uh, our Director of Human Resources outlined the status of the. Uh, installation of the physical barriers and all the, the signage and the floor markings. She indicated that through her, uh, review, I guess, or tour today, that all of that should be in place, hopefully with the barriers coming in next week. Um, I have another question with respect to, uh, the workplaces. And this has to do similar question to Counselor Rose. Has a workplace assessment been done of each employee's workplace? To determine if they meet the minimum distance requirements of two meters? Because. I can't remember exactly the upstairs, lean department, bottom downstairs. When I look at all those workplaces, it appears to me that everybody. Even our front counter, the two staff at the front counter are situated. Uh, either two meters or more than two meters, six feet away from each other. But have we done an assessment? And have we determined any workplaces that need modification as a result of? Them not being, uh, close or, uh, not being, uh, outside of the two meters?
So during, um, the working groups review, we did discuss, um, there, that there will be departments in areas such as in finance. The ladies that sit right next to each other, that alternative means would have to, um. Be developed, but we, we determined that that would be up to the department head, um, as to what they wanted to do for their staff. Um, so we haven't made a, a decision at this point because. Our plan is for them to come back in teams and they're on opposite teams so that it doesn't create a conflict. Um, it will be when they, when our staff members come back full, everybody in the building, um, and that. We're looking at that when COVID is, is no longer a risk, um, that that would be an issue.
Thank you. So just, just to your last point, um, and I was going to save this to the end, but I think I'll raise it now that. It could be a long time before COVID is no longer a risk. Um, we have to adapt. We have to learn, learn to live safely and coexist with COVID. I don't think it's going to go away. Um, you know, not until a vaccine is found, and who knows when a vaccine is going to be found. We've had five cases in Penetang Machine, so I think we need to learn to safely coexist with COVID. I thought the recovery report, uh, recovery framework report was well done. I appreciate the effort of staff in the preparation of the document. Health and safety of our staff is paramount to me as well. But as I said, and I come with a little bit of experiences, certainly other members of council can experience, can appreciate. Just in terms of looking around at what other jurisdictions are doing. What other service sector businesses are doing under phase two of the provincial reopening. There, in my mind, there doesn't seem to be a reason why the municipal office cannot reopen within a reasonable amount of time. Many businesses have opened. Um, by the beginning of August. By, I would say right after the civic long weekend, more than half the municipality offices will be open in Simcoe County. That's just through, um, information that is, is available. So our library has opened, our library is offering, um, uh, in-person. Retrieval of books and depositing books with the assistance of our library staff. They've been doing that for a couple of weeks. And as I said, um, there is a public expectation. So Madam Clerk, if everything works well here, I'm going to try to do a screen share. Cause I have a motion.
So I'm sorry, Counselor Vatavonkor, are you moving an amendment to this motion?
Um, yes. It's, this, uh, adopts the recovery framework as presented? Actually, no, I'm, uh. I'm suggesting a different motion. Can everybody read that? I'm sorry, the font is really tiny. When I was preparing it, it, uh. I noticed that I couldn't, um.
Is there any way you could, um, copy and paste that into the chat, uh, for everyone to see maybe a little bit better?
Sure. Why don't I try that? I had to use notepad.
And I just stopped the share just so.
Okay.
You could do that comfortably. Um, so I guess your worship, um, you don't have a mover and a seconder for the, the motion that is, uh, accompanying this. This, um. Report, so it's certainly, uh.
Madam Clerk, before we carry on, uh, with any type of request for motion. Uh, to support or to move on to any other motion, I have comments that I wish.
I, I do, I do as well, your worship, if I could be given an opportunity to speak at some point.
See, so first of all, I'm going to. Do my thing and, and what I have done. And I'm saying is that over many years, the municipalities of North Simcoe have worked in sync. We have always endeavored to deal with certain issues and concerns together. I have reached out to the four other municipalities in regards to staff transitioning. And the reopening of the municipal buildings. Tanyan Township, their health and wellness committee met this past Monday. They have no set dates of return at all yet. No intentions of opening municipal offices before September. Staff will be staggered in between the end of July to September. K Township, half of their staff is working out of the town hall. The other half is working out of the fire hall and Old Fort Road. And not sure yet on the timing, uh, when they will be going into these premises. Uh, expect that it will probably happen beginning of August. They will rotate staff back from fire hall two at a time, starting in mid-August and every two weeks. Opening municipal offices not even discussed yet, but not before September. Building permit processed by appointment. Spring water, staff working in two teams, A and B. In office every other day, the other day at home. No debt, no date set yet for opening municipal offices and do not, will not be before the provincial order is lifted. Town of Midland is much the same as Penetang Machine. Municipal offices not open to the public by appointment only and municipal offices will not open. On sometime in September. So this is all the information that I have just received. And so that I can say that we are certainly not out of line with what the other neighboring municipalities are. So with that, we'll move on and, uh, I, I do know that, uh, Fire Chief Ryan spoke first and I do see other people that want to speak, but I will let Chief Ryan go.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I guess I'll speak as the community man, emergency management coordinator. I think the plan gives the municipality the flexibility. And that to move forward, uh, to make sure that it is safe for our staff and things like that. So during these unprecedented times, we all need to stick together. Our staff have been diligently and continue to diligently provide services. Uh, to our residents of this municipality with minimal impact. We need to allow the plan to go forward and allow us to put these measures in place so that staff can come back. And have a gradual, well-played planned re-entry plan that allows for an adjustment period before we open to the public. If we fail to provide this to our staff, we raise the risk of failure causing more disruption. Create an erosion of trust yet again with, uh, the, the residents and taxpayers of the municipality. The plan, although those dates are there, there is the flexibility in the plan. Once the barriers are in and we start transitioning staff back in. That those dates can be, um, ramped up and moved up. I would just ask council not to handcuff the, the working committee and the control group by saying. Let's move those dates and we're going to pick dates and move because there's all kinds of barriers still here. Uh, I agree with Counselor Vatavonkor. We are moving forward, but none of us have a crystal ball to know what's going to happen. Our numbers have been low. I wish I had a crystal ball, uh, to tell you that the numbers are going to continue to stay low as we move through stage two. Into stage three and things like that. If I had the crystal ball, I would have invested all my money in P P E and hand sanitizer. And then I'd be looking at retirement, but those are all things that we need to, to look at. And management, we need to be prepared to be able to adjust and move. If there comes a second wave, third wave, or whatever, we need to be able to deal with that. So I don't want to see us open up. Our facility is relatively small in, in the thing, the ability to spread. Let us get the barriers in place. Let us transition the staff back. Let us make sure we have all the bases covered and then we can look at accelerating those dates if we need to be. Those dates are put out so that we can have that option of moving forward to make sure that it's safe.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Counselor Levy? Counselor Levy, you're on mute. Okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I support, uh, the hard work George Vatavonkor did on this. And his views on the topic, his research, et cetera. Uh, like Mike, uh, I'm working with the public every single day. I do not have the ability or the resources to be halfway as safe as town hall has. Uh, I'm doing my best. My customers are doing their very best and, uh. It's, uh, it's working well and, uh, I do believe that we can. Start the reopening a little farther ahead of what, uh, the staff is, uh, recommending. And I would be delighted to, uh, be the seconder on Counselor Vatavonkor's motion, which is now in the chat function. Thank you.
Further comments, concerns? Counselor Sanama?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I do, I just want to, uh, uh, the reports was very good. Um, I certainly appreciate all the comments that, um, Counselor Vatavonkor has said, also the comments from, um, Fire Chief Ryan. Um, my, uh, I do agree that we have to do this cautiously, but. I also agree that we need to move it forward a little bit quicker. I, I. The, the parameters that are on, in place on the program are basically saying. You know, when things will happen and they will only begin by mid-August or they'll only begin by, you know, by later. So although. Fire Chief Ryan is indicating that it will move forward at an earlier date. There is nothing in this report to show that it will. If anything, it looks like it'll take, it will take longer. Um, you know, the, the call, the only thing I can say, the comment about saying the minimal impact to the public. How, how do we know there has, there's been minimal impact to the public? Um, you know, I, I've spoken to people that, you know, they, they like to pay, they like to pay their taxes in cash and that facility isn't even available at all. So. I, I agree with, um, with the proposal. Um, that, uh, Counselor Vatavonkor has put together, um. The only other thing I can suggest is as opposed to taking a month in between these phases. Step it up to only a week or week and a half between phases. And, um, you know, it. I do believe that we can, we, as, as he said, we all have to be adaptable. This is a, we don't want, I don't want to see people at risk and I don't want them to, I don't want staff to believe that we don't. You know, we don't value their safety. I mean, that we do value their safety to, you know, to the nth degree. But I, COVID is not going to disappear and I don't believe that we'll be able to be in a position. To, to say, okay, well, you know, we can't open up until we know that everything is a hundred percent safe. You know, what we can do is just make our moves, um. As safe as possible. And although, and, and Mayor Leroux, um, I know we would work cooperatively with the other municipalities. But if people aren't stepping forward, then there's nothing to encourage the other ones to step forward either. That's just my two bits.
Thank you. I just want, I just want to point out one thing here, Counselor Sanama, is that in, in regards to payments and, and paying their taxes. Paying their water bills, uh, I have confirmed that, uh, uh, over eighty-two percent of our taxes have been paid. And they have fortified methods of payment, even the cash runs through the bank and the water insurer. Our, uh, bills are all paid to date. So just to clarify that, uh, it's not that, that big of an issue. For them to pay their taxes or their water bill. So Counselor, who has the flag up here? A deputy mayor, do both.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted, uh, to support, uh, the report that has been brought forward this evening. I think as pointed out by Chief Ryan, there is the capability, uh, and flexibility. To move forward quicker if in fact all the safety features are in place. Our staff is adhering to the rules and regs that have come down from our health unit. And absolutely the health unit, there probably won't be anybody working in that office until twenty twenty one. I know that for a fact. So people are being very, very cautious. And yes, I would also say today I got an email from an individual that was asking about the water bill. I answered the email. I sent one to Donna. And within ten minutes, I'm not kidding you, the email was answered, the customer was extremely satisfied. Got all the information in reference to taxes and water bill that they wanted. So our staff is working and they are adhering to inquiries all the time. So I think we have to move forward very cautiously. And, um, I think the report does indicate that there is some flexibility. And if things can happen quicker, then all the more power to everyone. Anyway, just my comments.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I have to say that, uh, I, I also have received quite a number of, of calls and emails from, from. Uh, citizens and ratepayers, uh, saying how, uh, they're very impressed on the. Uh, report and, and the return of inquiries that they put out to our staff. And I believe I saw Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I think everything's been said that I wanted to say. Um, as we, as we discussed at our section meeting, I was thinking of a reopening around, uh, just after the August first weekend. I think, um, we can accelerate with the way things are going, the way that that report was written, we can accelerate this and update, up the dates. To what the proposed dates that Counselor Vatavonkor has talked about. Um, just to note, Berry City opened all their public counters starting tomorrow and appointment only with the planning department. So. They're open to the public. So, um, things are starting to roll. And it won't be long before other municipalities are going to start the, start going on that way. And I think what Counselor Sanama. Uh, said about being a leader, I think someone has to lead this or we could be going like this forever. Because COVID is not going away.
Further questions, Counselor? Counselor, uh, who we got? Mr. C A O, I see you, uh, hand up there.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, I think our Director of Emergency Services also had his hand up and I believe Counselor Vatavonkor before myself. Um, if, if you wish, or I can, or I can go ahead. It's up to you.
It's up to Counselor Vatavonkor. You did have yours first, George, so let's. Counselor Vatavonkor?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, yes, C A O leads and our, uh, our fire chiefs, uh, by all means, they can go ahead of me.
So, C A O?
I'll go if I could.
Okay.
I just, whole group or the, or the, or the working committee ever thought that we wouldn't be adapting. We've adapted from day one. We've adapted from day one. These eyes are tired eyes because I'm monitoring this as your community emergency commander, coordinator all the time. 28 meetings. We're not taking this lightly. We know that we can't do 100% and that this will go into 2021, 2022. We know COVID is here for whatever the duration is going to be and whatever the new norm is going to be for us all. Alls we're asking for is that give us the time, let us put the barriers in place, make sure that we've got everything covered. And gladly, if, if we've got it all covered, let's accelerate. We're only being told that the barriers might be ready and in next week. We could be another week. We could be another two weeks due to those demands. I'm not so sure at this point what the rush is to open up. And I said this at the section meeting and I'd say it again. In the future, if you, if council members are getting this information, because we as staff aren't getting that information that people would like to come in and pay their taxes, we, we, we mentioned that to you tonight. That would be great information to have as we're working forward and changing this. So if a second wave comes or other things come and we have to shut down and change, if you're getting that information from the public, it would be nice to know. So that when we're making those decisions on operational issues going forward, that's a, that's a great tool for us helping. I think the plan, the plan does what council wants. It gets us there. It pushes those dates out, but those dates can be flexible once we know. Council has clearly said that the safety of staff and the public coming in are paramount to them. And I think that if the barricades don't come and we start putting dates and we start announcing, oh, by this date, we're going to open or possibly open and we have to push it out. Then we have that black eye as staff and the municipality. And that's not our intent in this. Our intent is to make sure when we're ready to open, we're ready to open and it's going. I'm not suggesting that be December. I'm not suggesting that it won't be September and I'm not suggesting that it can't be by August. I just think give us the ability to move forward with that plan. There is the flexibility and let us deliver that moving forward for the municipality.
Thank you, Chief. And I believe that you mentioned 20 meetings while I want to correct you there because the control group have actually met 29 times. So, Mr. CAO?
Your worship, I just wanted to just touch on a couple of points that I think I heard from, I'm not sure if it was Counselor Sanema or maybe it was Counselor Levy. But I guess just the, the one piece that I think I see in the proposed motion is with respect to, and I think I heard from, from a member of council at least, was that, you know, the intent of bringing all staff in by the beginning of August, I think. I guess just in my regular CAO meetings as well as regular conversations through the HR group that our Director of HR has, I would suggest that that is far advanced to what most municipalities are doing. I think there's very few municipalities, I probably need less than at one hand to count how many municipalities have all their staff returned to the office. I would also suggest that from a, from a due diligence perspective, there are municipalities that are saying, you know, listen, folks, we're not even thinking about transitioning some staff back to the office, let alone all staff. So I just would ask that council consider the all-staff component. We've strategically put in measures and done divided staff into two teams. I believe and I'm very confident that we have an excellent system in place with the team structure and the remote work protocols. There's a number of mechanisms that, that we have in place to ensure productivity. I think that's a non-issue for council. I, I think it's fair to say that council trusts staff working remotely. And this is one simple measure to maintain a team approach and maintain and mitigate potential risk down the road. So that was just the one piece I wanted to mention. The other piece, and I think it might have been Counselor Sanema now that I, that I think about it, mentioned about maybe narrowing the gap between the phases from say four weeks to, and I'm not sure what she mentioned, but maybe two weeks or something, something close. You know, and that's maybe an approach that council ought to consider, you know, that staff could strive towards. I just, you know, I, it would, it would maintain the structure and the intent of what the control group has came up with. But adjust the timing a little bit as opposed to a more significant amendment that was being proposed. So I just
Tammy, I see your hand up, but Counselor Vatavonkor was next. So George?
Yes, thank you, worship. I've already spoken once and, and when I speak again, I want to speak to my motion and, and I see others that put their hands up to, to speak. So I'm going to defer. I've already had my one time. So when I come around again, it'll be with respect to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe I saw Counselor Clu.
Thank you, your worship. I, I would defer to Tammy. I think she was waiting before me. So I can wait a little longer.
Okay, fine, Tammy, go.
Thank you, through your worship. I just want to, one thing that I didn't touch on that is in the report is the level of service that we have been able to provide since the onset of this. And we have done an excellent job, all of the departments of modifying how they do what they do. Our remote work teams are doing an amazing job of providing excellent service on a continual basis. And then the other piece is the recommendation of Dr. Gardner. He, he had, he'd said, you know, we don't recommend that you rush staff back and that you do it cautiously. And so, you know, with the team's approach and having staff come back and be able to provide a level of service that is excellent is something that I, I think really needs to, to be given consideration just because of the level of safety or that extra layer that it provides for the staff.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Clu.
Thank you, worship. I do have a question, but I just want to say that I'm, I'm not in favor in rushing this at all. I think our staff has done a remarkable job in providing customer service and I really don't think there's a service out there that's really lacking if we continue the course until September. I don't believe that a reopening serves us well. I think it's really something that we would do for optics sake and not really for the sake of public health and safety. My question though is, should one of our staff test positive for COVID? What is the procedure at that point?
Well, everybody goes home and hibernates for 14 days. And so then if, if you were to put all your staff in and one contacted COVID, that means the municipal offices would be completely shut down for 14 days.
I'm not sure about that, your worship. Maybe our Fire Chief might have a comment on that.
Your worship, I was going to suggest that either Director of HR or, or our Fire Chief could compliment, compliment that question.
I'll let the Director of HR go first and then I probably have a piece or I can go first, Tammy, because I may not have it all either. So it's my understanding that in, in the workplace, in particular where there has been contact or possible contact. And when we indicate we're not deep in the bullpen, and I'll use the municipal office, there could be indirect contact from floor to floor, people moving around that building. I would suspect that that building would be shut down and deep cleaned. And then everybody would be tested. There may or may not be a requirement for everybody to be sent home for the 14 days. But the medical officer of health would provide direction on that. My guess is though, because it's such a small facility and the likelihood of the cross-contamination is that facility, those people could be asked to self-isolate for 14 days. But I, I don't know of a case that I could give you an exact thing on that. I can tell you from my other hat next door, we've had a couple of cases within the, the fire hall where we didn't have to shut down the, the whole fire hall, but the firefighters turned up negative tests from outside the fire hall and they weren't allowed to respond even though they were negative for the remainder of the 14 days based from the health unit. So if I take that into consideration, then my guess would be that it could possibly be every buddy would go for the 14 days. And again, I, I watch ER, but does make me a medical officer.
Further comment?
I, so, and I do recall, and Paul, you may recall, everybody may recall this, Midland at the early onset at the Transportation Depot, they had to shut down the buses and they had to deep clean them because there was a positive test. I do know that, you know, when you have a positive, you have to follow what the health unit tells you to do. And so if there's cross-contamination and cross-exposures, then they're going to be telling us to, to maximize, you know, whatever we're doing and making sure that people aren't, you know, they're going to get tested. And so we have to follow the direction of the, of whatever the health unit says. So there is a potential that it will adversely impact operations.
And certainly as this keeps unfolding, the science keeps changing, right? So it's that crystal ball thing that we talked about. It would be so nice to have the playbook to pull out and know that A goes to B and B goes to C. But unfortunately, sometimes A goes to L in this, in this pandemic. And I think that's what concerns me a little bit about bringing everybody back to work instead of the team's approach. So we can maybe look at that escalation and the team's approach. But if we get everybody in that one facility and, you know, if you bring back everybody in the, the fire hall, theoretically, the whole command staff of the Penitent Angling Fire Hall could be out in one swoop. And, and, you know, I would hope that nobody throws out any snowball comments after that one. But, but there's, there's another facility that could easily be affected when it comes to that. So I think the team's approach going forward is still the benefit to the municipality versus everybody. And again, like the Director of HR says, you know, we're speculating on what happened. The bus thing, yes, they closed down the whole Public Works and bus things for 48 hours, did a deep clean, that kind of thing. But that 14-day thing, if it's imposed, I mean, it really handcuffs a small municipality like Penitent Angling.
Counselor Clu, you have further comments?
Just a quick supplementary, I, I'm not sure if, if all staff had to isolate for two weeks, are they still capable of working from home at that point? Or is everyone just on vacation and, and nothing happens?
I would suspect that you could probably do some remote work. Like I, I don't think what would stop them if they're being isolated from still doing remote work. But I guess that would be a determination based on the health unit and a municipal policy or practice that might be in place to deal with that.
Tammy, would you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to interject there. So yeah, absolutely. We could, we could still work remotely because that's what we're doing now. It would be though, the impact it would have on the community and the frustration and the aggravation of us opening and then closing and, you know, and the optics of that.
Your worship, just to, just to complement that, the other, the other thing I would add is that currently staff have the flexibility and are attending Town Hall. So if I use finance as an example, there's, most days of the week, there's at least someone from finance in for a portion of the day, getting mail, collecting, you know, tax payments that are in the Dropbox, et cetera, paying bills, et cetera. And so that, that would potentially, depending on the advice that potentially would be in the direction.
And as I think I understand it, I believe our bylaw is actually working out of Town Hall. Is that direct, Tammy?
Yes, they are.
Do we have any further comments, concerns, questions, whatever? So Counselor Vatavonkor, I take it then that your intention here is to put forward a motion to reconsider?
Thank you, your, thank you, worship. So my, my motion is actually a referral motion. It's referring the report back to staff. And I just want to speak a little bit because certainly the conversation at the section meeting in terms of the timeframes that I outlined there are different than what I'm proposing today. I recognize that there are limitations. And so I've amended my position with respect to what I'm putting forward. So I think the first thing that I stated is that that I think it's fundamental to say, and even from a legal standpoint, that the town's workplace is at, at our administrative buildings. So so basically the first phrase is that a town of Penitent Angling declared that the place of work for its office staff is at the various office locations that the town provided, such as Town Hall, Public Works and Min Center and Fire Hall. And the reason I put that in there is that there are, there are examples in various work settings where employees have been working from home and they've been working from home for so long that they're now disputing in fact where their workplace is. They're, and they're refusing to come back. They're saying, well, no, my workplace is at my home now. And the employer has the ability to be able to declare what the workplace is. After that declaration, whether there's flexibility in terms of how that's done, that's a, that's a management decision. But I think it's important as a principle to say that the workplace is our town offices. So the part of it deals with the, I refer the report back to staff so that they can develop and implement a reopening plan that addresses the following. And the, the first one is the opening of all public counters able to provide in-person service to the public as of July 27th. And then there's the qualifier. Subject to plexiglass barriers, signage and other control requirements being in place, staff and staff training on new protocols and dealing with the public. So today is July 8th. That date is the 27th. That's two and a half weeks from now. So there are some caveats. We don't know if the plexiglass is going to be in place. We need to have staff training. Maybe that date's not going to work. But at least there's a target. Say, okay, the 27th. Oh, can't do it on the 27th. Well, maybe we're going to go August 4th. So that's, and that's an amendment from what I talked about at section. At section, I said the 20th. And that's what I said to you, your worship, when we first talked, but that was in June. And the next part is that a phased return to work plan be developed that sees all staff in their designated office space by August 4th. So recognizing that people are working in teams, not get everybody back, get everybody back in kind of a phased manner. That's another week after the 27th. So when you think of July 8th and you think of that much time going, that's basically, well, it's almost a month from when council might make a decision to when staff would be back in the, in, in the office. And again, that is fluid. All, all the precautions have to be in place, the barriers, et cetera, et cetera. The last is that the Municipal Emergency Control Group be authorized to make any minor adjustments to the schedule to ensure that staff are able to work in a safe environment. So again, paramount that staff are able to work in a safe environment. Make whatever adjustments, minor adjustments that you feel are appropriate. But the principle of getting staff back sooner than what was outlined in the recovery framework report is outlined. So your worship, that's, that's the motion. I'm prepared to move it. And that's that.
Your worship, just procedurally, I just want to ensure normally we would normally, I know we kind of, we kind of just went right into this topic versus our normal procedure would be you would read the motion and then you would have questions, movers and seconders. And we didn't do that. And so I'm not saying what Counselor Vatavonkor is suggesting is offside at any point because the, the suggested motion from staff isn't on the floor because it was not read and moved and seconded. But I just don't want to lose sight of, of that procedural piece. So as the chair, it's certainly your, your call whether or not you want to bring the motion from Counselor Vatavonkor forward first, or if you wanted to bring forward the original recommendation, have a mover and seconder if it's to be defeated at that point to go to then the recommended motion to refer back to staff from Counselor Vatavonkor.
I think Madam Clerk, we will go to the original motion and we see if we have a mover and a seconder. And then as you indicated, if it's defeated, then we can move on to the other. So the motion, if you would read it, please, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. The original motion, as per the recommendation of the report, was that as per the recommendation from the return to normal working group and the municipal emergency control group, council adopts recovery framework as presented.
I have a mover, Counselor Clu, seconder, Deputy Mayor. All in favor? And a both, so three in favor. I don't see how many other. Yeah, okay.
So Counselor Vatavonkor, do you want me to read your motion? Or do you, are you comfortable reading it? I think you, you said you were making an amendment, but then I know you were doing some commentary in between. So I just want to make sure that, that I have it accurately.
Madam Clerk, before we go there, I see that Counselor Sanema is wanting to speak on something. So Counselor Sanema? So Counselor Sanama.
Counselor Sanama, did you? Yeah, sorry, I had to get that on mute. The only, the only, like, the only thing I would, I would ask may, Counselor Vadebunkar, when you're talking about the phased return work plan, it's saying all the staff be in their designated space, team basis, I guess. So, you know, that, I mean, we can still open up with, with the half staff, like, or alternating days. Is that possible?
My standpoint is that's a management decision in terms of how they want to organize the work. But I have no problem with that.
So then Counselor Vadebunkar, I take it that from your motion, you're not expecting that on whatever return date you're proposing, that the entire staff is going to go in on that date?
That's not exactly what I said. I said that, that was what I would prefer, but I recognize it's a management decision and that management has to make this work. And as I said, the interest is to, to see our staff back.
So Madam Clerk, I think I would prefer that you read the motion. Thank you.
Yes, your worship, just to confirm for Counselor Vadebunkar, is it the exact motion as listed in the chat?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All right, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Penitangishing declares that the place of work for its office, its office staff at the various office locations that the town provide, such as town hall, public works, admin center and fire hall. Be it further resolved that counsel refers to the, refers the recovery framework report back to staff to develop and implement the reopen, a reopening plan that addresses the following. Number one, the opening of public counters able to provide in-person service to the public as of July 27th, subject to plexiglass barriers, signage and other control requirements being in place and staff trained on new protocols dealing with the public. Number two, that phased return to work plan be developed that sees all staff in their designated office space by August 4th. And that Municipal Emergency Control Group be authorized to make minor adjustments to the schedule to ensure that staff are able to work in a safe work environment.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, with that, I am also asking for a recorded vote.
Okay, I do have Counselor Vadebunkar as the mover, but I do not have a seconder.
You have Counselor Levy as a seconder.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Council Deputy, sorry, Mayor LaRue has called for a recorded vote. So I will call for the vote, Counselor LaRose. Thank you, I'm writing, so if you wouldn't mind unmuting, I can, it'll take a little longer for me to look up and down. So Counselor LaRose.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Cummings.
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Dubois.
No.
Counselor Sanama. Counselor Vadebunkar.
In favor.
Counselor Clu.
Not in favor.
Counselor Mayat.
In favor.
Counselor Levy.
In favor.
And Mayor LaRue.
Uh, no.
That motion carries three, two, or sorry, six, two, three.
Okay, then we will move on. County Penitangishing Committee of Adjustment, okay. On to the Committee of Adjustment appointments. As the Council of the Town of Penitangishing ratified the mayor's appointment of the following members of the, to the Committee of Adjustment, Counselor Jessica Clu and Deputy Mayor Anita Dubois. Are we all good with this? Okay, that's carried, thank you.
Sorry, your worship, I do need a mover and a seconder and call for the vote.
Moved by Counselor Cummings and seconded by Counselor Vadebunkar. Okay, moving on to Committee of the Whole Report, June 10th, 2020. And that the recommendation contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Recreation and Community Services Section be approved. Mover and a seconder. Counselor LaRose. Counselor Sanama, all in favor. Okay. And that the recommendation contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Planning and Development Services Section be approved. Deputy Mayor Dubois and Counselor Clu, all in favor. That's carried. That the recommendation contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Transportation and Environmental Services Section be approved. Counselor Mayat. Counselor Levy, all in favor. Thank you. And that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Finance and Corporate Services Section be approved. Counselor Vadebunkar, Counselor Cummings, all in favor. Thank you. Well, now we move on to motions of which notice has been previously given. There are none notices of motion, there are none. Consideration of bylaws. So we have bylaw 202030, a bylaw to amend by law 202026 being a bylaw to set the rates of taxation for the year 2020.
Sorry, your worship, sorry to interrupt. I did, I did want to stop just in case there was, I think, Counselor Clu or maybe Counselor Cummings that wanted to pull this, that pull the property standards bylaw for it to be addressed separately or potentially referred back to staff. I just didn't want to blow by that without a signal.
Yeah, I was actually going to pass over it, but what's if, would, would that be considered a norm, Madam Clerk, to just pass over it? And then it's not in part of the bylaw?
Um, no, so ideally, and we've done it before, I believe, where a member of council wants to discuss a bylaw or potentially not pass a bylaw, they most, they just move to request that the bylaw be handled separately. Right now, we have them done by consent. So if we want to, if, if it's such council's desire when we want to remove the property standards bylaw and pass the rest by consent, then we can do that. Or if we want to pass them all today, then that's certainly council's, the council's wish.
So Counselor Cummings, is it your wish to remove it?
Well, actually, your worship, no, it wasn't my wish. I wanted to pass the bylaw, but I wanted to come, work on procedures or within that bylaw. So the bylaw is good by itself, but it's what we're doing with it after.
All right, so we go with them all. 202031, a bylaw prescribing standards for the maintenance and occupancy of property and to repeal by law number 201153, 2020-32, being a bylaw to amend zoning by law 20, or 2000-02 as amended of the Corporation of Town of Penitangishing, remove the H symbol from 28 McCartus Drive, and that the Council of the Town of Penitangishing introduce the following bylaws and that the bylaws be ready first time and deemed to be read a second time and third time and carried. All in favor. Thank you. Question period from media and public, I don't think there are any announcements and inquiries. Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, your worship. Just one quick announcement. It was just a reminder from our Director of Recreation that we're still offering a babysitting course. We have approximately eight positions left open. They need to contact the town. I believe it's about $45. So that would give some people some stuff to do and get some kids some work.
Counselor Sanama.
Counselor Sanama. Thank you, your worship. I also, just to make an announcement about the, there are still applications being taken for the, the third position of the Community Ambassador, who is, you know, working out at the splash pad. You can visit our employment page on our website or contact hr@penitangishing.ca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further announcements or inquiry, Counselor Clu.
Thank you, your worship. I'm sure you were getting to this, but I just wanted to welcome Cafe Kitty Hawk to our town. I think we're all pretty excited about it.
Yeah, very nice to see, for sure. And with that, the other, the other announcement I, I have is that I would like to see that council refrain from making decisions over the phone prior to council meetings. I know that it's been happening a number of times and let you all know that it's not right and it's not proper. Okay. And with that, we go to the confirmation bylaw. And it is that confirmation bylaw 2020-34 be signed, sealed by the mayor and clerk and mover. No, Counselor Sanama and seconded Counselor LaRose, all in favor. And motion to adjourn. The Deputy Mayor, okay, so we are adjourned. And if counsel, like, give me a few minutes, I have to readjust my other screen to get my Committee of the Whole meeting on. Okay, we're up and running, council. So Committee of the Whole Electronic Meeting, Wednesday, June 10th, 2020. And we will call the meeting to order. And I'll ask for the approval of the agenda. And that the Committee of the Whole Agenda, June 10th, 2020, that the Committee of the Whole Agenda for the June 20, 10th, 2020 be approved as presented, mover and a seconder. Counselor LaRose and Counselor Vadebunkar, all in favor. Thank you, carried. And we have a declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has, so do, or at the appropriate time. Presentations and delegations.
Your worship, I believe Counselor Sanama would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I, I do, I am in a, I have declared a pecuniary interest in regards to item 8B2, the agenda titled regarding the St. Andrews Lake development. My residence is located directly across the road from where the proposed development is located. And I believe the development will have a, an impact on the surrounding properties, including my.
So recorded, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I did also receive the required form from Counselor Sanama earlier today. Thank you.
Very good. And now we go to presentation, delegations, all sections, and I don't believe we have any. So that brings us to the council information package. And the recommended action is that council information package dated June 10th, 2020, having been given due consideration, be received for information. Are there any concerns or questions or concerns on that one? Counselor Vadebunkar. Uh, you're muted, George.
Counselor, okay. Sorry about that. Just speak to item 2A. To the seeking designation for song, that we fled us of the, of the procedure, but I'd like to see it, it go to staff. So, thank you, worship.
Yeah, and I, I don't really see that that would be an issue going forward to staff. Madam Deputy Mayor, is that what you are going to?
Yes, yes, I'd like to see that happen.
Okay, any further regards to the SIP?
Oh, yes, I had another one.
Yes, okay, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
I've lost my spot. It was in reference to the water levels. I think it was the letter that has come from Tate Township. I would like to see us support that. They've presented a motion. I don't have the right number.
I believe it's 4A.
4A, yes.
4A, and you're proposing a motion to, to support?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have that?
I don't actually have the letter in front of me from Tate Township, but certainly staff can bring that forward on the next agenda or we can pass a simple motion that's not be directed to provide a letter of support related to item 4A, whichever is preferred by council.
It is in reference to water levels in the Great Lakes and certainly we're all experiencing that. And it's the erosion on our shores. And I think what they're asking, they're making both levels of government aware of the situation. And that's what we're asking for at the moment.
Yep. Okay, further, it starts with SIP. There being none, could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Levy and Counselor Clu, all in favor. You. And now with that, we move on to C, Section 8, Transportation and Environmental Services. And I pass it over to Counselor Mayat.
I agree, your worship. It sets an agenda, recommend action that the following is centered agenda item have been given due to consideration to be received for information. Item one is the Midland Penitangishing Transit Ridership Monthly Update. And the second one is the County Road 93 Multi-Use Trail Project Update. Do we have any concern or? Counsel, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Dubois.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would ask our Public Works if we are aware of the cost to the municipality of this trail. I know it's moved along. We have, I'm not sure that you have discussions with the county in reference to the cost, Brian, but maybe you could give us a little information on that.
Certainly, through Mr. Chair to the Deputy Mayor. If council recalls, I did present a report to council regarding our, our contribution to the project last fall, I believe. And not having the report in front of me, I believe it was in the order of about 249,000. So that report was carried and that would be our contribution to the project.
We have any more? Go ahead, your worship, I mean, Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Thank you. I just, have we discussed this issue with the county people? That certainly has a big cost that's escalated over a few months. I mean, it's going to be beautiful, but it's sure going to be the best trail in the county, I think. So have you had any discussions about the cost, Brian?
The last discussions I had regarding our allocation was pertaining to our revised contribution amount. And that was the subject of our, my report to council last fall. Because the costs associated with the trail were, did change from the during the design phase. And that led to my submission of a report to council to request for additional funding to fund our contribution. So I haven't heard any indications from the county that 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 has risen and as of our last council report, that will be our contribution towards the project. I believe the project, including the culvert installation is is in excess of $3 million. And the town of Midland has the majority share of the trail costs. As says, the majority of the trail is within the municipality.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any more?
No.
Questions with this matter?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Can I have a mover and a seconder? By councillor LaRose, seconded by councillor Cummings, all in favor? Pass, thank you. The matter for consideration. Item one is the Federation of Canadian Municipality Municipal Asset Management Program. Recommended for action that council approves the submission for the application for funding from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities through the municipal asset management program. Pretty straightforward, this application we're handing in. If there's any question or manager T and E is here, so. Want any question? Can I have a mover? Councillor Levy, secretary, deputy mayor Dubo, all in favor? Pass, thank you. Item two, disposal of surplus asset, RDS 2020-17. Recommended for action that council approve the disposal of all surplus item as outlined within the report staff. You look at the report, shows you the item that we're going to be auctioning off. If anybody's interested, well, to buy something, you know, this there. If we have any questions, Brian is here. Do we have any questions? Can I have a mover? Councillor Levy, secretary, councillor Sannama, all in favor? Pass, thank you. Question, Brian, or yes? Okay, thank you. Hey, item number three, drainage improvement within phase two of the Harbor Point View subdivision, ENG 2020-12. Recommended for action that council approve option two, outline, outlined it within the staff report and that the fund requests for this work utilized from the developments charge reserve fund in that council expressed the intent of recovery of funds of subsequent development charges by law. Hey, can I have a mover on this? No mover before we have this. Okay, we have a mover councillor Clu, seconder. Councillor LaRose. Okay, do we have any discussion on this? Is there managers here if anybody wants to bring up councillor Levy?
Thank you very much councillor Maye. I would like a little background on this that I don't seem to have seen. How this was this missed? Why would we be paying for drainage on a new subdivision? Is this not always covered in the plan of subdivision? Just if if I could get the director to or the planner to give me a bit of understanding on why we're paying now for improvement to drainage that it's always been my understanding that would have been done in pre servicing.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair, to councillor Levy. The the issue is being brought forward to council tonight. It has been ongoing for for a few years now. I've been monitoring it for the last several years or last couple of years. Spoken to many residents and the the issue right now is the is the success of some pump discharges that are happening through a group of properties in this subdivision. The the elevated or perched groundwater condition that's causing this excessive groundwater condition was not included in the original design for the project. And it wasn't, it wasn't caught by our review of the project as well. So it no, no contribution or or no allocation for dedicated storm services, which would be the for these these issues. Were included in the original design or the approved design for the subdivision and no accommodation or allocation within the subdivision agreement is is included for it. We've had several meetings, I've had settled several meetings with residents in the area to discuss this issue over the last couple of years. The CAO and I have met on a few occasions with the developer to discuss this issue. They've made no no promise or dedication to to fix this this issue as as they, as I've noted, they they've indicated that it's not included within the design for the subdivision. So therefore they're they're stating that they're not required to 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 fix it. They have made some proposals to do install drainage pipe within phase three, which during the the planning and design phases four. However, this proposal, it's my view, won't address this issue. And we've, I've witnessed it now for over two years. With the sodding and the greating of each lot within the subdivision. These issues are are continuing to occur year round. So it's not just in the spring and the fall where we get our wet weather events. It's actually happening in the in the dead of summer. Where these these some pump discharges are happening continually. And right now, now that we're maintaining the roads and the sidewalks within that that phase of the subdivision. It's causing ice dams to form on the road, which is causing operational issues for us and our plow drivers in winter time especially. In addition to this ice formation on the sidewalks, which presents liability issues for slip and fall. So it is an issue that needs to be addressed. And as I've indicated, we have approached the developer for for help with this issue and they've made no, they've made no assertions that they will. We've also, I've also consulted with our lawyer about our legal standing related to this matter and he's saying that there's no mechanism under these, the subdivision agreement to to force them to do this or or use securities to to resolve this matter.
Sorry, I fell asleep at the wheel. Councillor LaRose, I guess. Turn your microphone on. Councillor LaRose, your microphone.
There we go. We all right?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, I I do believe that all of council is aware of the issues that it's going down there. We've all been called to the site. We've all gone down and seen it. Does it need to get done? Yes, it has to get done. That's not the point. The point is, is that here we have a subdivision that's only a few years old. And now you guys are coming to us, asking us to spend an extra $100,000 of tax money to fix something that should not have happened. We should not be having to supplement $100,000 worth of drainage work to a subdivision that's only 48 months old. That that's completely unacceptable. So what I would ask of council is that we find a report, get a report, make a report of what the heck happened, who dropped the ball? Was it Public Works? Was it our engineers? Was it the lawyers? Was it whoever produced the subdivision agreement? This is a huge expense to us that should never, ever, ever have taken place. So am I on board for getting it done because it's gonna, you know, stop the problem? Absolutely. But this is disgusting that we're asked to be paying for this.
Thank you, councillor LaRose. I think the next one was councillor Levy. Councillor Levy?
Thank you very much. Just supplementary, and I'll make it very brief. I agree with councillor LaRose. Yes, it has to be done. We know it has to be done. Those people deserve to to have that fixed. I agree with councillor LaRose also. I would like to see a a report explaining to us how this happened because it should never have happened. We all know that. Everybody sitting here tonight knows it shouldn't have happened. It did. Why did it? Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Levy, councillor Sannama.
Just a quick thing. I was just wondering if going forward, are we now, is there a clause that we've got in our subdivision agreements that'll protect us in the future so that this doesn't happen again? And I don't know if this is directed to Brian or to Andrea.
Brian, can you answer that or?
I address that. The the issue right now is the the design that that's approved by the municipality for each subdivision. The design can be changed and altered. You know, obviously, if certain items need to be fixed or changed from the approved design. Those are done so during the the construction phase and it quite often. The issue with this one is that there was no specific services time drawn to the inclusion of it. So there would be no mechanism in this, in the subdivision agreements for anything that wasn't proposed. So anything in terms of the legal interpretation of of a subdivision agreement, I would have to rely on our solicitor, but that's my interpretation.
Answer, question councillor Sannama. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, first of all, Brian, back when, you know, this all took place, I believe probably way back around 2007, 2001. Were there any indications at all of the water table and the problems that it would be causing? Because I know that the biggest problem and the only problem to all of this is there's a constant pumping from all the residences on that street. And so was there any indication that the water table was of that magnitude and and would make this problem? That's my first question. I have a blue bottle, Mr. Chair.
Through Mr. Chair to your worship, I just want to clarify, are you referring to the the initial phase of the subdivision, Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Well, I would believe that the sign was done in the initial phase, if not.
Yes, oh, yes. I just wanted to know if you're you're referring to the original phase of the Bellill subdivision. That was done back in the 2007, 2008 timeframe?
That's right.
Yes. I actually spoke to a lot of residents within that phase. And the residents that I did speak to have told me, especially in the in the in the properties that are towards Thompson's Road. They didn't, they did experience discharges in the fall, which is not uncommon. However, they would seem to dissipate in the summer times. I took from table issues as in the second phase, which is, which is curious because a lot of the the properties within the first phase are at the same elevation as the properties or some properties within the second phase. So it is curious as to why those properties are not seeing that kind of excessive some pump discharging as the properties in the second phase.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the other comment that I have, Mr. Chair, is that we realize, of course, that there was a mistake made here. Mistakes get made. We can say, oh, yeah, well, at the cost and so forth. But on the other hand, we know that what has to be done has to be done. And I can't see, like, we already know what the problem is and and there was an oversight by someone, yes. But why, why are we gonna, you know, do the the blame game? It has to be done. And so why can't we just move on with this and and then make sure and hope that this would not occur again?
I think councillor Cummings had something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was shocked when I saw this report come to me. I remember sitting in a bus, a minibus, being driven around and given a tour of that particular subdivision. And at the time, there was concern that some pumps are running onto the water, onto the roads. And that our public works staff are, were having a problem with icing roads. This was when the project was in its initial stages. And we were assured that that was going to be fixed, as well as the junk that was on the on the roads. So our public staff couldn't get it, could get around. So I'm really amazed that I'm seeing this today. Especially with a developer who has had many problems with phase one, phase two, when he's now going to phase three, phase four. The, it's, it's going to happen again, unfortunately. And I cannot see us doing this. Have we assumed the road yet, Brian?
Through Mr. Chair to councillor Cummings, no, we have not.
Is there anything preventing us from not assuming that road?
The the only thing that right now is preventing us from assuming the road is the the resolution of the remaining warranty periods and the deficiencies associated with the subdivision.
I just, again, I'm really disappointed that I'm seeing this in front of me.
Hey, I think next was councillor LaRose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the direction was, we're probably going to have to pass this because we need to get it done to take care of our residents. I don't think we're going to be in a position tonight to debate whose fault it was. All I asked for in the beginning is that we find out whose fault it was. We pay large, large dollars to all these engineers. They tell us the hydraulic pressures of the water and where the tables are and all that nonsense. But that's for staff to bring back to us. As for tonight, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we vote on passing this so that our residents can get fixed up. And as the mayor said, we'll play the blame game after, once we get the report back from council or from staff.
So do we, okay, councillor Vadimovka.
Thank you. I agree that work needs to be done. When I look at the motion, I look at the last paragraph in the motion where it says, and council expresses its intent to recover these funds in subsequent development charge bylaws. That's the phrase that gives me the problem. So I think from my standpoint, if if the chair would agree, maybe there's an amendment to be done to that phrase where it would say that council expresses its intent to recover these funds from the developer. So that we can initiate a process that we could recover the funds. I I heard what was said earlier about our legal position and and whatnot, and I I understand that. However, I think there's a moral obligation as well from the developer's standpoint. He put these houses in, he sold these houses. He is, he has a contract with these owners. Most of them are still the original owners. I think there's a, I think there's a moral obligation. In addition, he's got other phases going in this development as well. And I think I'd like to see us appeal to his his morals with respect to coming good to fund it. But in the interim, I think we need to get it done and we can pursue the 100,000 by other means. Thank you.
Thank you. So the way I understand it, accept the motion, we want to do an amendment. Can we do that, madam clerk?
I mean, it's a, it's a significant change. It's a friendly amendment saying that the the intent is to recover the funds from the developer. If that's a move from councillor Vadimovka to make that amendment. We would need a seconder and a and a motion for that.
Okay, so councillor Vadimovka, you want to do that amendment? You move to do that, seconded by councillor Levy? Okay, do we have any more discussion on this? Okay, do we have any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Derek, sorry. Hang on. Go ahead, Mr. CIO.
Just looking for some clarity. I think I understand what Counselor Badabankar's request is. But just to be clear, staff have had the conversation with the developer. And the developer has suggested to us that he won't be covering the costs given he doesn't have the requirement within the agreements. I think Counselor Badabankar may have mentioned at our section meeting earlier this week that he would like a formal request via a letter to the developer. Is that... And maybe I missed that part, and if I did, I apologize. But just so that we're clear from a staff perspective, what that means, that amendment in that last section of the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. CIO. It was like what we spoke about in section, that this would be a formal letter from council to the developer requesting that he pay for the cost to make this repair in the subdivision. So it would be a formal request from council.
Okay, so we're all happy with that amendment? All in favor? Opposed? Passed? Okay. I lost my spot. Item four. The Transit Bus Replacement, RDS 2020-18, recommend for action that council approve the purchase of the 2015 City Transit Bus from City View Bus Sales and Services at $150,000, including GST. And that council approved the use of the following reserve and grant allocated for this purchase. The Transit Assets Management 2020 budget is $166,021. Any discussion on this? Can I... Deputy Mayor?
Just a comment, disappointed. We bought a hybrid bus thinking that we had at least six years. And all the reports that came... Oh, mine got four years out of that bus when we should have gotten six. And I understand that we've had a lot of repair costs. So we need to move forward. It is a service to our community, so we need to purchase a new bus. But it's just disappointing that our hybrid didn't work for us. Thank you.
Any more questions for the... Madam Tini? Can I have a mover? Counselor Levy, a secondar? Counselor LaRose, all in favor? Passed, thank you. Item five. Intersection upgrade to Robert Street East and Fuller Avenue project update. ENG 2020-11. Recommend for action that council approve the quotation of the Greenland consulting of $46,250, excluding GST to be complete in Schedule B class environment assessment to the Robert Street Fuller Avenue intersection improvement project. And that the additional funds of the amount of $50,000 required for this capital project to be allocated from the municipal model reservation fund reserve as per July 18 staff report, FIN 2020-5. Any discussion? Can I have a mover? Counselor Badabankar, Counselor Cummings, all in favor? I think everybody's falling asleep on me. I think it's... Oh, okay, good. Counselor LaRose?
Sorry, that was my fault. I was kind of gapping there for a minute. This is another thing that we have looked at over a number of different years. We've looked at it and looked at it and looked at it. And I'm kind of at a loss to understand how, at Christmas time, when we passed the budget, all the money was there. And now, all of a sudden, three months later, it's doubled. What kind of engineering firm were we hiring that didn't get it right? It's a basic T-intersection, there's nothing exciting about it. How does the price double in the space of a few months? So I just, I wonder, either we're doing something wrong or somebody is not providing us with the information. I could see if this price was from six or seven years ago, but the price that we got to do this is less than six months old. We passed it in the budget and now they want to double it. It just seems like we're getting screwed.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Counselor LaRose. The basis for the additional costs, we are proceeding with the design of the project under a Class EA Schedule A+, which essentially requires, has very little impact on the environment. There's no property requirements anticipated at the time. As we were getting into the design phase of the project, we were getting, we were trying to fit all of the auxiliary lanes as are outlined in the attached figure within the allocated road right-of-way width that we had available at the time. Relocations that were also a gas substation on the other east side of the road, which has required us to shift the road further to the west, west side of the intersection. And this is the main reason why we're actually going to be needing property associated with this intersection. It's a very busy intersection. So to entertain the property requirements associated with the project actually bumps it up to a higher class of Class EA environmental assessment at Schedule B, which requires detailed public consultation, additional studies associated, so an archaeological assessment, an environmental impact study associated with the lands required. So that's the bulk of the reason for the additional costs.
Counselor LaRose?
And what part of all that did they not know at Christmas when this was brought forward to our Capitol Plan? That road has existed there for eons. That gas station where the piping comes up on the end has been there for eons. How do we take a quote from somebody and they didn't bother to drive to the end of the intersection and look around? It's crazy.
Hey, any more questions for Director? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Not a question again. Again, Mr. Chair, it's concerning. Just kind of flowery in your expressions and your statements and stuff, but be mindful of certain words that we use. We are televised there.
I do your worship, and if I said something wrong, I would apologize. But if I was to go buy a new car and they told me it was $50,000 and I said, fine, and when I went to go pick it up because I said it was ready, they wanted to charge me $100, I would be very upset. This is, that represents the difference of a 1% tax increase because somebody that we hired to go out and engineer that did a lousy job.
Okay, do we have Counselor Levy?
Thank you very much, Counselor Mayat. I'm not going to support this at this moment. We just spent $350,000 of unbudgeted money. And sometimes you just have to say no if you're trying to be fiscally responsible, which we're always saying we are. You know, that light's been waiting forever. It can wait a little longer, given the price tag increase. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, Counselor LaRose, again. I don't disagree with your comments and the concerns, and I agree with you too that it is concerning. But it's the language you have to watch sometimes, Counselor LaRose, on TV. And if you want me to repeat the expression that you're saying, then I can. But this is something that you have to be careful, the wording that you use. And Counselor Levy, I disagree with you because of the fact that I know it's an outrage and it's a concern and shouldn't happen. But at the same time, we have been waiting for years to get that intersection addressed. And it is an issue and it is a big problem. So I think we have to move forward on it.
Okay, so much for the discussion. So I guess I need a mover?
No, Mr. Chair, I was just about to, I was just about to let you know procedurally, you already had a mover, a secondar, and technically you already carried that motion. So we did allow for additional comments after the fact, but you can...
Okay, so obviously that motion has been moved. Probably went too quickly on that one, I apologize. Yeah, come on, computer. Referral for upcoming agenda and staff referral that's the Transportation Environment Service Section endorse the following additional existing referral, upcoming agenda and staff, further agenda items. The one item is a Church Street parking and Appeal Street still removable site. Do we have any to add? Want to remove any? Vote, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you. Got to unmute the right thing. I would like in addition, since we've had our transportation, transit buses going around the town, there has been a call for accessibility transit. Now Midland has it. They've hired Reach. And I think it's time council looks at accessibility. It's all right to say you can get on a bus with a walker and a wheelchair, but that doesn't mean you can get to a doctor's appointment that's about three blocks away from a bus stop. So I think we need to put that on there and think about how we have accessibility to our people who are disabled.
Okay, so you want to add an item?
I do.
Do we need a secondar for that, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I've moved up the ranks.
Take my spot, I'm going up.
We do, I think we just need a little bit more information. And then, yes, Counselor Cummings would require a secondar to add that item. So I have the item as accessible bus stops. Is that right?
Sorry, accessible?
Accessible bus stops?
No, accessible transit.
Oh, accessible transit in general, not just the...
Yes.
Okay, accessible transit. And then the key deliverables would be options for providing...
Door-to-door service and accessible transit.
Okay, and that's all I need. And then you'd need a secondar.
Do we have a secondar? Counselor Levy? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? And pass. Opposed? None, thank you. And now I guess I need a motion to accept the further agenda items. Do I have a mover? Votes? Counselor Cummings, you want to speak?
Yes, before we go on, the motion that was set out for Robert Street and Fuller, there was never a vote called on that.
I found that question as well, and it could be getting late. But I had written while we were going, it was moved by Counselor Badabankar, seconded by Counselor Cummings, and then I wrote, carried. So we may have been in the process of it and I just wrote it.
Yeah, because I seconded it just to get it on the floor. And then there was no vote, so...
Okay, Mr. Chair, if you want to go back to call that vote, it may have just been interrupted.
Okay, so that's the intersection upgrade, Robert Street and Fuller Avenue project update. We got a mover and a secondar? All in favor? Five in favor, opposed? Three opposed. So it's carried. So now can I have a mover for the future agenda item that we added? We got a mover, Cummings, secondar. Counselor Levy, all in favor? Passed, thank you. And turn it back to your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Mayat. And with that, we'll move on to Section D, Recreation Community Services. And I pass it to Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, worship. We'll go to item 70 on our consent agenda. And that was a report that I'm sure council's read about the shoreline condition. We have a few issues in the park with the high water. And instead of investing a bunch of time, effort, and money into fixing them up now, we're gonna wait till the end of the season and see how the water level runs. If there's any questions on there, move by council, all in favor? And that is carried. Moving down to B, matters for consideration. We have the outsourcing of day camp. This was brought to us a couple of years ago through our service delivery review. We've seen the presentation tonight by the Boys and Girls Club. And we're asking council to agree to enter into this. We have the $15,000 in the budget and we'd like to enter into it for a one-year trial run so everybody has a go at it. They can see what the response is like from our people. And council will be able to revisit it in a year and see if we want to return to the normal or continue down that path or a modified path. If there's... We'll look for a mover and a secondar to get it on the floor and then we'll entertain any questions. Moved by Counselor Sanama, seconded by Counselor Mayat. And is there any other questions on that? Cherry is with us if anybody has any. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? And that is carried. Our next item down is our referrals. We have our outsourcing of day camp. So I would imagine that we could probably either take it off or we could leave it on for the one-year trial period. I believe that would be, we could go either way. Just let me know what council would like. Looks like we have, Counselor Sanama would like to speak?
I don't know if you need a mover and secondar first and then speak, but I would request that we leave it on with a forward date in the fall of 2021. Just as a reminder that we are expecting a report back and then we can review it and see how everything has gone.
Yep, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with leaving it on there just as a reminder because it is going to be for a trial period. So that being said, we'll look for a mover and a secondar to accept the future agenda items. Before we do that, we have Counselor Badabankar.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose. Perhaps we could just rename it a bit so that it's just, it's gonna get an update report after the trial period? That would be...
Oh, all I believe that we need on there is something that's gonna remind us that it's a trial period and we need to look at it into the fall. The staff can rename that however they deem necessary. Do you have any comment, Cherry? Nope? All right, then if we have a mover and a secondar, we will call for the vote on that. All in...
We don't have a mover and secondar.
...favor? I thought we had Counselor Sanama and Counselor Badabankar. So we will recall for the vote then. All in favor of leaving that on there? And that is carried. Thank you. And whoop, that does it. If there's no questions from anybody else, your worship, it's back to you.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose. And with that, we'll move on to Section C, Planning and Community Development Services. And I pass it to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Under Consent Agenda, recommended action that the following consent agenda items, having been given due consideration, be received for information. Number one, municipal law enforcement office monthly activity report. Number two, Heronia Animal Control Monthly Comparative Report. Three is the Second Quarter Planning and Community Development Department Update. And number three is land sale, a piece of land adjacent to 25 Jury Drive. And number three is land sale, a piece of land adjacent to 25 Jury Drive. Are there any questions on any of these items? See, yes, Counselor Cummings?
Comment on the Bylaw Officer's Report of Opened and Closed. I would like to see that number 64 on patrol hours go up to 100 patrol hours. But we're working on it. It looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cummings. We do have a second body in that department. So I'm sure our next report, we'll see more. I need a mover and a secondor. Moved by Counselor Sanama, seconded by Counselor LaRose. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. On to matters for consideration, our draft community improvement plan. These are the results of our public meeting. I will read the recommendation and ask for mover and secondor that the bylaw been passed pursuant to Section 28-2 of the Planning Act to approve the community improvement plan dated June 2020 by WSP in accordance with our staff report PL 2020-22. And that the downtown community improvement plan project area dated June 2020 by WSP be approved in accordance with staff report PL 2020-22. And further, that the administration of the community improvement program be approved in accordance with staff report PL 2020-22. And finally, that the town of Penitentine Machine accept applications under the community improvement program beginning September 1st, 2020. I see that we have our planning director with us. Andrea, is there anything that you would like to add?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So you do have the staff report and the whole package in front of committee tonight. I think as you will note in the staff report, there was a slight tweak from, from what we've seen at the public meeting in June to the mapping. It was very, very insignificant and minor. So it was at the request of the public. We had a chance to follow up on it. And though it's, it's kind of a little outside of where we had, that we're going. It's not, not tremendously outside of where we thought we were going. So we always intended that the mapping area would be flexible and could be, can be looked at if we know it needs to to reflect what the business community needs and that kind of thing. So for those reasons, we supported the change. And, and again, I think this is a, a good opportunity for the community to really take a look at what can happen in our downtown and take advantage of some of these incentives. So I can answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Andrea. Other questions? Yes, Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I was just asking, just wondering about where the funds are coming from? Because we could have some pretty large funds coming from this particular program. Are we limiting funds and where are they coming from?
Thank you for your question. Council will recall that we did, well, maybe I'll let the director answer just in case. Sorry, don't cut it all right. Andrea, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. And if I need to, I'll turn to our treasurer too. But I believe this all came about from a council discussion that happened in the budget at the end of last year, budget discussions that happened. So as a result of that, there was $50,000 that was set aside. I'm not 100% sure where that original $50,000 came from. I feel like there was some, I will let Carrie speak to that. So the idea is 25,000 went to the development of this plan. The 25,000 will come from that money to fund the remainder of the 2020 program. At this point in time, where there is no money set aside for 2021 to, to fund the program, through this project, we've talked about using the Community Development Reserve Fund, which is a fund that gets filled through land sales. And so I think the report also alludes to this. This could work depending on the magnitude for a couple of years, but it may not be a sufficient long, long-term funding mechanism for the community improvement plan. So I think what we've said is that this will be decisions that council will have to make annually. And so they will always be part of the budget conversations each year.
Thank you, Andrea. So in other words, $25,000 will be available this year to that fund? Yes, thank you. Carrie, did you want to add something?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to confirm Andrea's comments, the original $50,000 in the 2020 budget was transferred from, approved to be transferred from the Community Development Reserve, Community Development Fund Reserve. And yes, there is $25,000 remaining that can be utilized for this program in 2020.
Thank you. Are there further comments, questions? Seeing none, I would ask for a mover. Moved by, moved by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Sanama. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Number two, application for draft plan of subdivision. The recommended action report PL 2020-12 be received or discussed. And that the draft by, the draft bylaw for zoning bylaw amendment application file number ZA3/2019 respecting 1145 Fuller Avenue be approved in keeping with staff report PG 2020-12. And the draft plan of subdivision updated June 23rd, 2020, application file number PEN/SUB/2019/2 to respecting 1145 Fuller Avenue be approved in keeping with staff report PG 2020/12. And I will note that Counselor Sanama has declared a conflict of interest and that has been recorded. So discussion, council? Seeing no discussion, I'd ask for a mover. Moved by Counselor Vatibonkor, seconded by Counselor Cummings. All those in favor of moving forward with this? Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you, council. Referrals to upcoming agendas, the Planning and Community Development Services Section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agenda and staff. Vacant municipal property inventory update, the GURFED policy, bylaw enforcement monthly report and review of signed bylaw regarding eight symbols, eight speech. I would think we could remove the bylaw enforcement monthly report. Is that agreeable? Thank you, counselor. And how about the COVID policy, Counselor Cummings? Is the property standard satisfactory at this time?
I think we'd have to leave that. We're looking at regulations still, so.
Policy, okay. So the only one we will remove is the bylaw enforcement monthly report. Could I have a mover for the balance? Counselor LaRose, seconded by Counselor Sanama. All those in favor? Carried? Your worship, back to you. We're all set, your worship. It's all your.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And that, we will move on to number nine and pass it to Finance and Corporate Services, Counselor Vatibonkor.
Thank you, worship, members of council. So just referring to Section D, Finance and Corporate Services Section in your agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. We have update number four on the COVID-19 financial impacts and we have the 2020 scholarship program. As in the past with when we received these updates, we've asked the treasurer to provide a quick synopsis. Do members of council want to hear a quick synopsis tonight of update number four? I would take that. So just assume that should all their questions. So we, we have the two consent items. May I have a mover and a secondor to approve the two consented items? Oh, pardon me. We do have a request to speak. So Counselor Clu?
Mr. Chair, just, I don't even know if it's a referral. I'm really pleased by the scholarship program. It's not something I know much about, but I'd love to see a little more promotion in the sense, or at least recognition perhaps on our social media, once we know the, who the recipients are. I think we should do that going forward. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Clu. I'm Adam Clerk. Do you have any comments on that comment? Is it something, a referral item, or is it just something the staff can run with? What do you, what do you think, Madam Clerk?
I would defer to the CAO if he thinks otherwise, but I think that's just a good point. I mean, certainly we're always willing to hear comments and feedback about what we provide through communications and social media. So I think that it is certainly a good news story that we should keep our eye on and, and share as, as we get the information.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll just, I'll just echo that. This is actually, I think, one of the first times we presented this report to council publicly. And so anything more we can do to better promote it, to comes to the counselor's point, I think, is well noted and duly noted, and we appreciate that feedback. So we will certainly seek to better promote it moving forward. We appreciate that feedback.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Thank you, Counselor Clu. And we have a question by Counselor Sanama.
In that regard, there is that second scholarship for the county and you can, we can still, like, there's still applications up until the end of July, I believe, is there not, if I read that correctly? And we can, if we can promote that as well, maybe there'll be some kids that'll apply that hadn't even thought, realized that there was dollars available.
Thank you. Good question, Madam Treasurer. We'll speak to that.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So the county does have a later deadline than obviously the high school graduations typically occurring in June. And our communications person, Sarah Marshall, has already pushed that out through various social media communications regarding the July 31st upcoming deadline.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any further questions on these two consent items? May I have a mover then for the consent items? Counselor Sanama, secondor. Counselor Levy, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you. Moving on then to action items, we have application of the municipal modernization checks that are proposed to be undertaken using the grant that we received. At section, we talked about some certain nuances in the report with respect to the financing. And we were advised that where the town had previously allocated either reserve funds or tax dollars to undertake particular projects, those funds would be returned back to the reserves. And in fact, the modernization grant would undertake these projects. So Madam Treasurer, is there anything else that you wanted to elaborate on in, in your report?
No, I don't think so, Mr. Chair, unless anybody has any questions related to it.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any questions by any members of council? Okay, seeing none, may I have a mover for this report? Counselor Rose, the secondor, Counselor Cummings, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. And we have the referrals to upcoming agenda and staff. So Madam Clerk, the song that we spoke of under the, under the correspondence never landed as a referral item on any of the other previous three sections. So am I to assume that the song is going to be on Finance and Corporate Services referral list?
I think that that could be a possibility. Our CAO may want to direct otherwise.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I had made a note of it as well. I was going to suggest we add it to FCS and then perhaps SMT can draw straws in terms of who's going to take the lead with it. But my suggestion would be to add it to FCS and we will sort out the who in the backend. But I think it's important to get it on there as previously indicated.
I think so too. I thought maybe TNE, but I guess that, we went by that pretty fast. So taking up the rear, I think that we could put it on the agenda. I see Madam Deputy Mayor put her card up to request to speak. Madam Deputy Mayor? Oh, your mic's off.
I would like to have an item added, the Georgian, Georgian Bay St. Lawrence Initiative. We used to be a member of that organization. I think it dates back to 2017. I have had some discussion with the treasurer and I would like to see us have the discussion at budget time to renew our membership to that organization. I think with everything that's going on with high water, it would be a good move on our part. All the other municipalities within the district and on the shores of Georgian Bay, most of them are members of this group. And I think it's important that we at least look at it.
Deputy Mayor, I see the clerks put her card up, request to speak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I believe that Deputy Mayor was the, was the first person to pull that song designation report as well. So it sounds like she wants to add two items, which is perfectly fine. I just want to ensure that we get the, the proper key deliverables for both of these items. And so if it's, it's, it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, if we start with the song, I think it's called Song Designation. Is that what we're calling it?
Yeah, I think we can start with that. I think it's basically, it's the adoption of this particular song is the Penitentine Machine song.
Okay, so sorry, I had heard a couple bits of rumbling that there was going to be a competition and, and okay, so no. It's just about specifically designating this song that has been put forward in, in some way.
Yeah, I think if I, if I recall, it was requesting a staff report to outline a process to designate this particular song as the town song. So it was to try to get, trying to get staff report on an agenda dealing with the song.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Sorry, if I just might, Mr. Chair, is it council's wish to designate this particular song? Or would council like to see a report in terms of what options council might entertain to designate a song? And this one might be one of many that gets submitted. Just, just to be clear, I think there was and would be there. Yeah, so, so maybe we can just get some clarity there, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, my thought process was just with respect to this song. So I don't know what other members of council. I know a few, a few spoke when I raised that, so they may have other thoughts. So I'll defer to others who may want to address this. I see Counselor Levy, Counselor Sanama, Deputy Mayor waved her hand. So Counselor Levy, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I don't think we need to complicate this. It's a song. I've listened to it often and I think the decision is do we designate it or not? And so let's keep it simple. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Levy. Counselor Sanama?
Actually, I didn't, I don't mean to complicate it, but I am, I just wondered from the optics perspective, if we do just designate one song without putting it out to the public that it is an option that's available. I just don't wonder what, what the optics would be like in that regard. So I would be considering, you know, the staff looking at other, at options and how we designate a song and if it costs us any money to do it. Sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Sanama. Madam Deputy Mayor?
I'm with Counselor Levy. I think we need to keep it simple. This request has come before us prior. So I don't want to complicate things. The song's been out there. It's a lot of people in our community know about it. I don't know. Just keep it simple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I happen to be quite favorable with this, but on the other hand, I think, being that the person who composed this song and sings it is a cousin of mine, I would declare conflict. Thank you, Madam, your worship. So I think that we've heard from a few members of council. I think that if we can refer, if we could just leave it as a referral to staff to prepare a report, and I'm sure staff will be, do a very thorough job in preparing that report when it comes back. We'll look for a decision from council at that time. Is that clear, Madam Clerk?
I believe so. I think we'll certainly put a report together to give council some options and make it as simple as possible. And then I just needed some clarification on the key deliverables for this, for the Georgian Bay-St. Lawrence Initiative membership.
Sorry, I must correct that. It's the Great Lakes.
Initiative.
I don't have the name in front of me, Stacy, but I will, I'm sure you can find it. Great Lakes, Georgian Bay-St. Lawrence Initiative. We used to belong to this organization some years ago.
Okay, so you want to report on.
Is that the proper wording for you?
No.
Well, I would like it listed. I would like us to consider membership of this organization at budget time. I would like it discussed.
Thank you. And Madam Deputy Mayor, if I may suggest, if we could get a staff report on that organization, what its functions are, membership, et cetera, so that come budget time, members of council have an understanding what the organization is. I think with the report, we could always refer it for consideration during budget. Sorry about the dogs in the background.
Okay, thank you. I think that's clear.
I think that's some sort of signal. What time is it?
It's walkie time.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, so we have.
One more question. Why are Andrea's kids still up?
Oh, they're on holidays, starting tomorrow.
So we had a, we had a new addition to our, to our group here when I saw that, that face on the screen. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, we have two amendments to the referral list. We have two items that were on the referral list. They have a mover for the Finance and Corporate Services endorse the following additional existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. We have a mover, Counselor Sanamaw, a second, Counselor Levy, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. And your worship, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vadabankur. And with that, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Cummings, okay, we are adjourned. And I would probably say that all of staff and including the CAO could leave the meeting. I think the only person that I would want to keep on, because we are moving to a special council meeting, would be HR, Tammy Martin. Everyone else on staff, have a good night.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be, I'll be staying on to clerk's meeting. That's okay. I will stay on to clerk's meeting, and we can thank Rogers for their participation. And let's give them a moment to, to sign off and start the meeting because we will be going into closed session. And we can just confirm that Rogers has, has stopped the broadcast and we will go from there.
Thank you to Rogers.
Are we good, Stace?
Have Rogers gone, Stace?
Yeah, I was just double checking. Yeah, we're good. We're good.
We're good. Okay, so then I will call this special meeting to order. And if anyone has any declaration of pecuniary interest, so declare. And with that, we'll move on to three, which is the approval of the agenda and the special counsel agenda, that the agenda of the special counsel meeting of July 2020 be approved as presented. Mover, Counselor Vadabankur, and the second, Counselor Mayet, all in favor? Okay, so then with that, we're going into in-camera items. And we have a motion to convene in closed session and that with, and that in accordance with the Town Penitent Machine procedural bylaw 2019-25, the council of Town Penitent Machine moved into an in-camera session to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Verbal update is what we're looking at from the chief administrative officer. Actually, the verbal update is not from the chief administrative officer. It's going to be from HR. And mover and a second, we go into a camera. Counselor Sanamaw and Counselor Cummings, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And with that, I am going to pass it on to Tammy from closed session. So I need a mover and a second to arise. Madam Clerk?
Yeah, you're going to arise without a report.
Okay, so arise without report. There, Counselor LaRose, Counselor Sanamaw. Okay, so we arrive without report. And then that brings us to reports in camera being held. Question given? Any? Are there none? So motion to adjourn. Counselor Mayet, thank you, council. It's been an interesting evening. Have a good rest of the week.
Good night. Have a good week.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, folks.
Good night, everyone. Have a good one.
Good night.